I have five thirty, we will call the meeting to order. Item two, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended with item nine J, the approval for hopeful Hoof's liability waiver?
So moved.
So Megan with the motion, uh, Tim with the second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item four, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve it in its entirety? Or does anybody want anything broke out?
So moved, as presented.
So Terry with the motion. Aaron with the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five, conflict of interest waivers. So first up, we have five A to approve Ethan Deschaux's conflict of interest waiver. Ethan, would you like to come up and talk about your conflict of interest waiver?
Thank you for asking me to come up. Uh, I'm here to speak on behalf of the fact that my wife's a high school teacher, oh, sorry. Okay. My wife's a high school teacher, uh, teaching for Mr. Wilson at Sturgis Brown High School and I'm the elementary principal at Piedmont Valley Elementary. And just to clarify that I don't supervise my wife, I don't have any relationship professionally with her. So I just wanted to be transparent in that regard.
Do we have a motion to approve his conflict of interest waiver?
Make the motion to approve conflict of interest waiver.
Brian with the motion.
Second.
Megan with the second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Five B, approve Scotty Brooks' conflict of interest waiver. Scotty, would you like to come to the mic?
Uh, I will be the head middle school track coach this year. Um, I've been volunteering in the past and so being, I guess, in a paid position, that's why I'm here.
Any questions for Scotty? Motion to approve?
Oh, moved.
Terry with the motion.
Second.
Brian with the second. Any, uh, any discussion?
I'm just curious if anything comes up along those lines, are you gonna recuse yourself if activities come up or? Would you just continue to?
Should be required if we had something with, uh, cross-country specifically, that'd be a paid position, that she'd have to recuse herself on a decision such related to, uh, middle school cross-country.
Not cross-country, but track.
I mean, track, sorry, track, I said cross-country, yeah, track.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item six, open forum. Open forum is an opportunity for patrons to share their thoughts and concerns. The school board will listen, but no discussion takes place and there will be no board action. The board members may ask clarifying questions. The protocol established for open forum is to provide a time limit of three minutes to share concerns. If a patron would like to have a two-way discussion, they are encouraged to schedule a meeting with the superintendent. Appropriate and respectful public decorum is expected. Any complaints about school employees should refer to school board policy KL, complaint against school board and po- school employee. I know we have a lot of people here for open forum tonight. Uh, I just wanna let everybody know that I'm assuming the majority of you are here because of our proposed budget cuts list that Mr. Wormstead has provided. The board is just seeing that and we will do our initial discussions tonight on that, so you guys can witness what our discussions will be during that time. So I, I wanna make sure that during this time, we convene that time for you guys to come up and discuss that. So I'm asking that all board members, if you have any discussion items on that, that we hold those discussion items until we get to the presentation on that. Um, if you have a question for the patron that is speaking at that time, um, go ahead and ask that. But we wanna try and make sure that we get through everybody's concerns and they wanna talk about tonight while also allowing us to conduct business as a school board. I also wanna point out, school board policy BD. The school board shall reserve at every official meeting a period of public comment limited at the board's discretion as to the time allowed for each topic and the total time allowed for public comment. But not so limited to provide for no public comment. Public comment is required at official meetings held solely for the purpose of meeting an executive session, in inauguration, swearing in of newly elected officials, and the presentation of annual reports to the school board. So tonight, I am in a, I'm proposing that we hold open forum to ninety minutes because there are things that we need to get to. And the other thing is, is that we need to have time so we can actually discuss these proposed cuts, um, that are on the agenda. Because we have to discuss all of that in front of the public and we need to have time to try and do that tonight, so we can get through that process and understand the thinking behind that. So as, um, any questions from the board members?
I think one, just reminder that the twenty-seventh of this month, meeting solely dedicated for each item, we'll have on the agenda for people to speak to each item on the agenda, whether you speak on one item or three items, we've dedicated that night for that. Um, so everybody here is a proposal tonight, has time to digest that and then come back with as many questions as you have. And the entire proposal, if you have not tracked what we do, we put everything online in our board packet, so you can see everything, including links and documents for that. Um, so we're trying to be as transparent as we can, so you have everything in advance, um, for that.
And that also gives the board time to digest what is on that proposal and try and figure out what that is and then do our research to figure out what we need to do moving forward. So at this point, we will start. Um, once you come up to the mic, please introduce yourself, um, and then go into your, um, what you would like to discuss. Um, you will be limited to three minutes, you'll see me raise my hand, that is your three-minute timer, that's when we need you to stop. Um, if it continues on, I will have to ask you to please stop. Um, we need to be, really pay attention to that timer so that we can get people through and allow them time to speak. Tanya.
Jessica Davis. In the Sturgis Williams Middle School eighth grade reading, my son and his friend mentioned the other day that they watched a movie and were reading a book called A Tall Tale Heart about a guy ca- being killed, sawing it, the gentleman into pieces, hiding it under the house. The police came, he killed them and put them under the house too. In the movie, it also wanted to show this murderous naked body, um, on a picture with his hairy naked private parts. Some of the other content that we're reading in the eighth grade, uh, reading class is a book called The Monster, uh, about robbery, murder, and trial, The Giver. Uh, burdened by histor- history memories, anxiety, unwanted people are killed. The father was a murderer, uh, Rosemary, or Rosemary killed herself with poison. They faked Joan, Jonah's death by drowning, um, and two people were near death from cold and starvation. The Holocaust murdered six million Jews. There was a next book surgery procedure, including this Charles, to have intelligence growth. Um, when the mouse that was involved in this procedure died, Charlie's fate was also at heart. We're also talking about a, a person being trapped and how the students feel trapped and, um, situations that they felt trapped. I brought this to Mr. Hederman and Ms. Oviet. Uh, both mentioned that these were approved by the state department of education and that there wasn't any additional curriculum for our kids to complete for our grade and they wanted to follow the curriculum. After reaching out to the department of education, they mentioned that they don't have an approved list and that the individual districts are deter- to determine the curriculum for the meeting, for meeting those standards. Mr. Wormstead mentioned Agape Love at the beginning of the school year. One thing we can agree on is that everyone loves their kids. Did the movie represent Agape Love? Did it show our kids to present Agape Love to others, the principal, the teacher, the friends, other students, other neighbors? Or was it exactly the opposite, fear, anxiety, depression, suicide, murder? Which one are you wanting our children to have? I would hope the first one. We are in a generation where there's so much more content at our fingertips. We can read anything about animals, family, government, law, media, good clean art and entertainment, business, farming, sports, or being a good neighbor, and the school decided to pick Goth murder, murder cases, horror, trapping people, and lab rat experiments for reading assignments. If we don't stand for these kids, we'll fall for anything, including sick people infiltrating our education system to groom our children. Our community this same week had a creep caught, kidnapped, raping, and drugging a gal. Thankfully, she wasn't killed and could go home to her family. Let that sink in about what we are teaching our kids this year. Outsider looking in, you're about to look at the school budget. This is exactly the reason why, uh, your attendance is down. You are short one point two million. People are looking at other school alternatives for good wholesome content instead of showing their children horror content or talking or showing inappropriate content in the elementary school, middle school, and high school.
Ms. Davis, that's time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Ms. Davis has, uh, spoke to me and she's, uh, submitted KLB, which is curriculum, um, challenge material for that, for that, uh, specific item, which is Edgar Allan Poe's Tall Tale Heart. So we'll be following our policy and process for that, so you know.
Becky Brook.
Hello, Becky Brook. My husband Tom and eight of our ten children are here. To discourage the closing of the Atoll and Hereford schools. It appeared to me at first that the budget, budget proposal was claiming to eliminate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenses by closing Atoll and Hereford. I struggled hard with this last night, so that was the short notice that we had. Trying to understand what that meant. This morning, I got the numbers. Basically, in last month's meeting, in the agenda, it stated that Atoll was, um, the, the net cost of Atoll and Hereford was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Not two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that's not what you said. I realize that now. The combined net cost for educating and running those two schools is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So no one is lying. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a real number that will be saved by the district, but how, how does that happen? Basically, that comes to that they're gonna close down those two schools. Done with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run them. But we still have to offer education to those children, so they're going to be run down a chute to go to the Union Center School. This proposal, I'm not accusing anybody, I'm just saying that's what this proposal is suggesting. And, uh, then we still have a hundred thousand dollars that are saved. So to me, that looks like, maybe I'm wrong, that is a profit that is coming from those kids and the net income that the district will get from the revenue of those kids enrolling in the district. That is, that is absurd, that's unjust. I encourage the school board to really look at these numbers. I don't think a school district should profit from the students. That it costs money to educate them and it's, it's a just thing to educate and pay money to educate our children. Tom and I have our best interest at heart, uh, of our children. It's our job to have their best interests at heart. Will strongly consider keeping our kids enrolled in this district. We will also, also strongly consider enrolling them in the high school homeschool program. So you still have those numbers. We love Atoll School, we love our rural schools, it's unjust to close them. If you do, I know God will help us.
Derek Allen.
Good evening and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Derek Allen and my family and I moved into this area this summer for me to take my new job up at the Lab in Lead. One of the biggest factors in deciding where to live was the quality of schools. We have three boys, as you can see here, one in fifth, third in pre-K. Thankfully, all are attending Whitewood Elementary. When we were researching schools, people constantly told us Spearfish, Spearfish has the best schools. However, when we were looking, great schools ratings showed Whitewood. We love the community and wanted to join. Now, my kids have been going there for seven weeks and the leadership, the teachers, and the environment there isn't truly exceptional. I am so grateful they are there, I can see why people talk about it. Principal Britt Porterfield goes above and beyond, not only for the students, but for the staff and the community as well. He is visible, approachable, and involved. He doesn't just lead, he teaches. My boys constantly talk about his leadership, his teachings in the STEM program, and they, how much they enjoy it. My eight-year-old, who is very shy, um, is coming out of his shell and being more confident every day. My ten-year-old ran for student council and he was elected. He played a lead role in one of Ms. Hillary Hill's plays, uh, Frog and Toad. Ms. Hill's another incredible example of what makes Whitewood special. She's the kind of teachers kids talk about when they go home. My youngest sings her songs and sings praises of her all day long. We came here from a large and highly rated school in the Houston, Texas area. It was full of programs, awards, and resources, moving here was hard. Yet just in these short, short few weeks, Whitewood, my kids have learned not only academics, but also lessons about kindness, citizenship, friendship, and confidence. Whitewood is shaping them into who they are. My oldest was heartbroken to leave Texas, especially because he wanted to start middle school and join orchestra in fifth grade. But now he tells me he wouldn't trade his days at Whitewood for anything. Having all three boys there at one school has been great. My oldest, he appreciates it 'cause he feels leadership skills. That's why I'm deeply concerned to hear discussions about removing fifth grade from Whitewood Elementary. Doing so would not just reduce enrollment or funding, it would change the very character of that school. Without that enrollment, we lose, lose, losing numbers and fundings. Also talking about joining them with the rural schools and the principal's responsibilities, either if we lose Mr. Porterfield or if we get more responsibilities to him, we're going to lose the quality of education we're giving those students. Why would we damage one of the best rated schools in our district? I urge the board to keep Whitewood Elementary as it is, a full, thriving K through fifth grade school led by strong leadership, dedicated teachers, and a community that deeply values it. Thank you for your time and I'll let you do for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Sally Jo Michaelson Cooper.
Hello, every school is our school. The movement of Space Force from Colorado to Alabama is a present illustration of how quickly military structure can transform overnight. How thousands of people can be moved at a political whim. South Dakota should not be relying on any type of immigration for numbers. The sentiment that residents of Meade County who live rurally choose their residences and therefore their hardships that come with that location shows the discrimination against children based on their parents' employment. If the rural students of Meade County were coal miners, or perhaps not of European descent, that discrimination would have an extremely different effect. The rural residents of Meade County are taxed for their schools. We at no time have asked for equality of services, but we are asking for services as long as we are taxed. Schools need to provide heat, teachers, reading, writing, and arithmetic. Everything past heat, teachers, reading, writing, and arithmetic is a luxury. The addiction to modern facilities and those luxuries is what is bankrupting your district, not the geographic distribution of students. How long in transit per day is child abuse? One hour, two hours, three hours, four hours? The Plainview School should be reopened and rebuilt immediately.
Thank you.
Richard Lee.
Yeah, my name is Richard Lee, I went from kindergarten through eighth grade at Hereford School and I think I did pretty well. My primary question is, I run the blade at Hereford for the county, so I'm in charge of snow removal. And I don't know if your plan is to bus these kids to Union and you're gonna have a bus stop or, we need to know a snow route. So whatever you decide, you're gonna have to tell the county something, so, 'cause I don't wanna go in eighteen different directions. That's just a concern, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Sam Johnston.
Yeah, I'm from Elm Springs. That's in the far southeast corner of this county. And we've been there for five generations and that, uh, when I was a kid, there was a lot of one-room schools. And each one of those schools had its own little school board. And they were, and they were running on a surplus. And when I was in fourth grade, they consolidated eight or ten of them schools that were within fifteen miles of Elm Springs and they built Elm Springs School. So I went to school at Elm Springs. My kids went to school there and those little rural schools are given a good education to them kids when they, when those rural kids get to school, at high school, they're, they're excelling in high school. And so my wife, she started teaching in, uh, nineteen ninety for Meade County. And at that time, there was twelve rural schools. So when I was a kid, there was twelve within the fifteen miles of Elm Springs. In nineteen ninety, there was twelve rural schools in Meade County. By the time she retired in twenty twenty or something like that, there was eight schools. Now there's five. And every time that we're, get into a budget deficit, the first thing that this school board wants to look at is rural schools. Get rid of the rural schools and it's not working, it's never helped. And the, I don't think that you're gonna gain a thing by closing more of these rural schools. For one thing, I would say that most of the kids from Hereford will probably go to New Underwood. Most of the kids from Opel will go to Faith. Most of the kids from Atoll are probably gonna homeschool. All of the kids from Elm Springs are gonna go to Wall. And the reason they do that is because of geography. We're eighty-two miles from Rapid City, or from Sturgis and the easiest way to get to Sturgis is go to south, the I ninety and they had to deal, we can come a shorter route, but it's gravel the whole way to get to Sturgis. Wall, when we get to, uh, I ninety, it's twelve miles down the road on the interstate. We're twenty-eight miles from Union Center, it's all gravel. We're thirty-two miles from Wall. So when the kids go to, get to high school, they're gonna go to Wall because of geography. So if they're not gonna be able to go down Springs, they're gonna go to Wall.
Your time's up, Mr. Johnston.
Thank you, sir.
Roxanne Thompson.
Yeah, my name's Roxana Thompson and I went to Hereford School and my kids went to Hereford School. And I just wanna talk about the value of the education in the smaller classrooms is just so great. And an example, my daughter went on to Brookings to college and her very first genetics test that she took, the professor called her in and he asked her, the first question he asked her is, did you go to a rural school? He goes, I can tell that you kids, that you have a better work ethic, you can just grasp the college workload so much better than kids in bigger classrooms. And that's what the professor at Brookings told her. And I think we put, need to put a value on our kids' education even over sports. I think it's more important to have those, those small rural schools going to get a better education. There's a lot of money put into sports and what percent of the kids actually go on to be like a professional athlete or something? You put a good ed, put a good amount of money into their education and they're gonna do a lot better later on in life. And I just think it's so important to keep our rural schools open.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Joe Trask.
Yeah, hello, I've been here before. My name is Joe Trask, I'm from Elm Springs. And I am speaking out against the proposed agenda item of closing Atoll and Hereford schools. Sam and I are both from Elm Springs and that isn't on the agenda this time, but the difference between Atoll and Hereford and Elm Springs is very small. And the degree in which, uh, the threshold in which you would decide to close the schools is only a degree away. Um, I echo what Sam says with regard to, um, the geographical issues with this and I think we've discussed that in past school board meetings. I was disappointed to see that this was an agenda item to close Atoll and Hereford. Um, as a school board, I encourage you to push back on Mr. Wormstead with all due respect to him and find a different way. This isn't the way. And, uh, it would be very refreshing if this was not an agenda item in the end of the month meeting. I don't believe that you will achieve the budget, uh, freeing up a budget as much as you think when you compound the other additional costs that will be, um, spurred on by this budget cut. And, um, also in closing, I will just say that, um, even if there were a monumental, um, budget, freefall because you closed these schools on a principal level, if there's children in those areas and, and geographically they're that far away, simply there should be the budget put forth to put schools there. So my thought is on that, on both tenants, it does not make sense to close these schools. I think the threshold should be set very high when regard to closing any other rural schools. And when I mean very high, very few students, maybe two or three, and none in the pipeline. And that's the threshold that I think we should be at now with those schools, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trask.
Terry Berry.
Hi, everyone, my name is Terry Berry. I have been an educator in this district for forty-three years. I actually retired in twenty twenty when my husband became ill, but at that time I started subbing and I subbed in nearly every school in this district, so I've been to all the schools, I know how they run. I have a lot of ideas about things that could be cut instead of closing down schools, so I will be back on the twenty-seventh because this will not be enough time. I am here to talk about the closing of the Atoll and Hereford schools. I think that by doing that, you are taking away those children's right to a public education. And I think for many of you that are new on the board, you should probably come out there and drive those roads on a day that isn't nice and dry. And just so you understand the distances and what you're, what you're asking of those people. They, they pay their taxes and they pay a lot of taxes. And they deserve a school and an education for their kids when there are plenty of other things that I feel could be cut from the budget where it wouldn't directly affect students. And there are some things that I think that you could cut that would probably actually give teachers more time with their students and you might see math and reading scores go up too. So my, one of my questions is, so you say, okay, we're cutting Atoll, we're cutting Hereford, we're gonna save two hundred and fif- two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but then we're gonna buy, I don't know, eighty, ninety thousand dollar vans, whatever they would cost to transport those students. And then what happens when you can't find a driver? transport those students. And then what happens when you can't find a driver? I know they almost didn't have drivers for the buses that they have this year. And I know that most of the parents over at Hereford, and there is, those parents work outside the school, they have other jobs, and, or they have little kids at home. I think you're gonna have a very difficult time finding drivers over there. So then what do you do at that point? Well, sorry, you're gonna have to drive your kids to New Underwood, or you're going to have to homeschool. Everybody isn't equipped to homeschool and doesn't want to homeschool their kids, but you will be forcing them into that. And this district should be about education. We are a school district. You need to keep those schools open and make sure that those kids have access to a public education. And as some of the others have already said, look at other things to cut that do not have, are not gonna really impact those kids' education. So one of the things that I see...
We're out of time. Thank you, Ms. Berry. And please feel free, any of you, to email board members. I know three minutes is short. You can always email the board, Mr. Wormstead. You will get a response. So feel free to email as well as if you can't get everything in, you have suggestions, whatever that may be.
Tanya Baker.
I'm just here to say that I'm opposed to shutting Atoll and Hereford down. I graduated eighth grade from Hereford School, and I graduated seventh in my high school. And my sister, Roxana Thompson, graduated valedictorian of New Underwood High School. So you do get a very good education in those grade schools. A little better education. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Alyssa Ennis.
There are lots of different suggestions and ideas that I could propose at the moment. But from what I'm hearing is that you're going to increase the cost for parents. You're gonna eliminate the growth for children and other communities. Instead of having balance, you're gonna take from the smaller communities to make a city like Sturgis. This isn't taking from the smaller communities. This is allowing them to grow and balance the budget appropriately. So please do not eliminate Whitewood or any of these smaller communities, because it's gonna totally damage the opportunities for the children involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Rave.
Hi, I'm Katie Rave. I'm a Whitewood community member. I happen to be the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I work for the Physics Laboratory in Lead, South Dakota. It's a very easy sell in the job that I have on a day-to-day basis to say that Whitewood is the hidden gem of the Black Hills. It truly is. But one of the things that makes it that hidden gem is our elementary school, and the fact that they tout the numbers that they do. You've looked at the reading and the math scores. You've seen all of the test scores, and you know that this is your flagship. You understand that this is the best performing school you have in your portfolio. When you look at it from a business standpoint, excuse me, it's about the numbers. And I get that. And the number that you're looking at is sixty-nine thousand dollars. But to us, what you're looking to cut is a net negative. It's not a net positive. So let's talk about the numbers that make the most sense to us, that you should factor in to the decision as you make your budget discussions. Two-hundred-and-eighty-three homes have been sold, parcels as well as homes have been sold since twenty-twenty in the Whitewood area. You might be wondering how that compares to other communities that you've actually added some funds to, like Somerset. Somerset has only had about two-hundred-and-ninety-four. Not a big difference. However, their population is twice, if not three times the size of ours. So you could argue that our fringe rural community is experiencing three times the growth that a community like Somerset is experiencing. We have a hundred-and-twenty-nine homes and parcels available right now. That means there's a hundred-and-twenty-nine opportunities for families to come into that area. Derek is actually one of the recent employees that we brought in from Houston, Texas. We're bringing in six-figure employees to the lab that I work for. We have fifty more positions to fill before the end of this year. All total, we're estimating two-hundred people that we're bringing in from the oil fields of North Dakota, the fracking fields of Wyoming, the coal fields. And all of these people are looking to come back to these communities. And the community they're gonna look at first is Whitewood. Yet your sixty-nine thousand is a big number to you, but it's not the number that makes any kind of difference. Thirty-four percent, what does that number represent? Those are, that's a percentage of what you would consider the economically disadvantaged students that make up the population of Whitewood. So they get Title I benefits. You know, that's the highest number in your district. Sturgis is twenty. Belle Fouch, twenty-four. Rapid City, you'd think would be higher. It's only thirty-two percent. So you're wanting to take away from the most economically disadvantaged school you have and take more parts of it away. Piece it out. Well, the minute you take away fifth grade, what happens? You drop it down to a population less than one hundred. What does that mean? Well, now you can redistrict. It falls under the bill that South Dakota passed, thirteen dash six dash ninety-seven. All of a sudden, you're now under a population of one hundred. You can condense. That's not a bill that supports us. It actually takes more away. So the minute you take away fifth grade, you're actually gonna end up taking more in the long run. And we know that's coming. Though there was a bill passed for small schools on the other side of the state, ten ninety-seven, that if you combine with other districts, you might get support, that doesn't help us either. Yet we're your flagship school, and you're doing nothing to help us. You should be busing students to us. We have a growing community. We have a population who's bringing high-paying people to the, to the state. Something to consider. The last number I'm gonna leave you with is five. It's the role that our principal plays in our community. He's not only our principal, he's our coach. He's our youth leader. He's a father. And he's a business owner. And those are the most important roles that we can have as far as a principal in our community. And he's embedded. His roots are already planted, and you wish to pick those up and put them in yours. But he's playing the most important role in ours. So as you consider these cuts, consider what you're doing. That is our cornerstone. And those numbers, your sixty-nine thousand, means nothing to us. But the numbers that we have coming could mean everything to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rave.
I will, one thing, the law does not say by school building of one hundred students or less. That it refers to the state reinforces the closure of school districts of a hundred students or less for that. Just a little clarification, because people read that law, and they think that it's a hundred students for a building. It's not. It's a hundred students for a school district, and the state closed too recently because of that. That's a school district only.
Nathan Hannan.
Well, I had a whole bunch of stuff I was gonna say. My name is Nathan Hannan. I was gonna read this, but I'm just gonna wing it at this point. Everything that she said, amazing. The other thing I want to point out, I get a little choked up thinking about it, is the heritage we're gonna lose by closing places like Hereford, not Atoll. I grew up on the East Coast. I'm not from here. I've got family over there. My father-in-law went to that school, Hereford. My wife went there. Her brother went there. Her grandmother was a teacher's aide there. Taught kids how to read. That family's embedded in Hereford. And in that school, because education is important to them. My wife has a master's degree. I don't have a master's degree. I'm dumb as a stump. I went to a big school on the East Coast. They didn't teach me anything. That woman knows more than me, and probably half the people I know. So does her brother. And so does my father-in-law. And they came out of Hereford. So I think the children of rural Mead County, they deserve better than, oops, we messed up the budget. Please go somewhere else.
Thank you.
Hillary Hill.
Hi, I'm Hillary Hill. I teach at Whitewood Elementary, Stage Barn Middle School, and Sturgis Middle School. I'm very concerned with the potential plans to cut fifth grade from Whitewood and to take away Britt Porterfield's position as our principal. Although I've only been a staff member at Whitewood Elementary for three years, I have previously been a student of Whitewood Elementary, a parent of Whitewood Elementary students, and the president of the Whitewood Parent Teacher Organization. My concerns, therefore, come from being a staff member, but also a concerned member of the Whitewood community. In the early two thousands, the decision was made by the board at that time to move the fifth grade from Sturgis Williams Middle School into Sturgis Elementary. The reason the board gave is that it's more developmentally appropriate for fifth graders to be a part of an elementary school than a middle school. You will note that all of our school district counterparts in the region have fifth grade as being part of the elementary. Rapid City, Spearfish, Lead Deadwood, et cetera, all have fifth grade as part of elementary. Many studies have shown this is where fifth graders belong developmentally. In two thousand and eighteen, the decision was made to move the fifth graders from Sturgis Elementary back to Sturgis Williams Middle School, but that was based solely on space. Sturgis Elementary was overcrowded. And that's also the reason why fifth grade is at Stage Barn Middle School instead of at Piedmont Valley Elementary School where they were originally located. It's a space issue. Space in a classroom is not an issue at Whitewood Elementary. The fifth graders fit just fine in the building. As I previously stated, developmentally, they will do better in an elementary setting. I do understand the idea of trying to have things be the same across our district buildings, but it's not the same everywhere anyway, because fifth grade is not part of a middle school setting in the rural schools. So Whitewood is not, in fact, the only place where fifth grade is part of the elementary setting in our school district. And an argument has been made that fifth grade being moved to Sturgis can create better teacher-to-student ratio at Sturgis Williams Middle School by moving the Whitewood fifth grade position to Sturgis. And to that, I will tell you, there are currently fifteen students in Whitewood fifth grade, and the class size at Sturgis Williams Middle School for fifth grade is twenty-one on average. So by moving the position to Sturgis, the overall ratio would move down to twenty students per teacher from a current twenty-one. And also, there will be bigger class sizes moving up to fifth grade in a couple of years in Whitewood, which would make the ratios very similar between Sturgis and Whitewood. So the numbers don't seem to warrant busing ten and eleven-year-olds to a completely different city to go to school. As far as our principal situation, sometimes there are people who are simply born to do a job. I truly believe that Mr. Porterfield can be a better principal for Whitewood Elementary than anyone else ever could be. I have personally lived in the town of Whitewood for thirty-eight of my forty-four years. And I can tell you, people who are not from Whitewood will never truly understand what it means to be a Whitewoodian. The dynamics of our town are different from anywhere else. Most Whitewood students live in or near Whitewood while their parents commute to other towns for work, as there are not many jobs available in Whitewood. This creates an interesting climate and very specific needs, for instance, an after-school program. Mr. Porterfield has spent a significant amount of time finding out what will bring people from our media area to Whitewood Elementary.
Ms. Hill, your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Taylor Marr.
So this has nothing to do with anything. I just have a question for the board. Is AI on your scope? That's becoming, you know, you can write papers and check notes, even the teachers can use those kind of programs to grade. And I just was wondering what your viewpoints are on AI. Is it even on your radar?
So, so yes, AI is on our radar. I think I presented to the board two years ago on AI, and I've presented both state and nationally on AI, and how teachers can use it to develop curriculum, how to watch for plagiarism using AI. And like I've said, I've probably done two or three national presentations, and then I just presented to a school board in New Mexi, our faculty in New Mexico, and then at the ASBSD conference this summer in Sioux Falls. So there, there's a lot of good use for faculty members to cut down on the amount of labor in developing curriculum and getting idea generation. So I focus a lot on that. I also teach at a college, so then I, I talk about how do you catch plagiarism or cheating with AI? And I talk about the processes that I use. Are students using it? Yes. Do we know it's a concern? Yes. Is it really hard to detect? Yes, because it, it creates its own stuff every time it rewrites. So creating good curriculum on how to set up assignments mitigates cheating with it. I, I could talk for hours on AI, but...
Sounds, sounds like you need to get an email, email chain going with her.
I was just gonna say that we've, we also adopted a policy recently on AI. Yeah. So it, it is there. If you want to view it, we can find the number for you.
Ryan Aldrin.
Good evening, everybody, ladies and gentlemen of the board, fellow Whitewoodians, members of the rural community. I'm here this evening for multiple reasons, primarily, Mr. Porterfield and his role with the Whitewood Elementary School. I have a little bit of a unique perspective that, that most of you don't in this room. Mr. Porterfield married my sister and is raising two of my beautiful nieces. I only bring that up, and it's important, because I see that the values that he's got at home and instilling in these children that I witness nearly on a daily basis, he's bringing that into Whitewood School where he is raising not only soon-to-be four of my children for eight hours a day, along with the wonderful teachers and other staff at the school. But they're in his hands. And I'm sorry, I had notes down. All the points got touched on, so I'm, I'm coming from the heart here. But I see that we have a shining star, the transplant, transplants. I don't know where gentlemen like this find their information, but it's out there. We do have a very warm environment in the school. We have a very successful school. It seems like the accolades are tremendous. I can't name them all. But I'm just concerned, as a former leader for a company in this community, that when you are faced with the tough decisions of cutting budgets, I understand that, you don't go after the best. And not to say that the next principal that would fill Mr. Porterfield's shoes in the school could not do a great job. It's not fair to them to condemn them out of the gate. But why would we get rid of something that's proven that works and look at the rally behind him that's here this evening to help him keep his job in the Whitewood School, which is what he wants to do? That's evident on how I can see this is eating him up. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Aldrin.
Matt, Matt Wyland.
What was the name again?
Matt Wyland.
I misunderstood what the signup sheet was for, but I would like to speak in support of Whitewood and the teachers there, especially the principal as well. One of my daughters had a little experience at school where she was bullied by some of the other students, and he was able to take her aside that same, the same or the very next day and help. And she felt much better afterwards. If there was a, a principal that was servicing multiple schools, that might not be an opportunity until that had passed. So I would, like I said, I did misunderstand what the signup sheet was for, and I didn't have anything to bring out. But just to speak in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Casey Pitts.
Hi, so I'm Casey Wheeler-Pitts. I'm the same as him. I didn't know I was signing up to talk. But I will anyway, because the deal with the Whitewood School means a lot to me. I have a kindergartner there and a first grader, and a little girl that'll be coming up in a couple of years to hopefully go there as well. I guess we chose, so I've, I grew up in Whitewood, but I always went to Spearfish School. But we chose Whitewood because I, I work in Rapid, my husband works in Belle. And it was just so personable, the whole, the whole experience. When we went to check it out, it was just like, this is where the kids need to be. I feel safe having them there. I feel safe having them there while I'm out of town. And what makes it really special is Mr. Porterfield. Honestly, he's one of the bright stars that's at the school. I mean, everybody's great there, but he really stands out. He knows every single student. He pays attention. He takes the time with them. My kids go to the after-school program often, and he'll be there playing basketball with them when I get there. I mean, he's taken time out of his evening to do that kind of stuff, and people notice that, and we appreciate it. I mean, he just, he is very special, and I would hate to see him go. I think it would really, really harm the school. And also 5th grade, speaking again on it being personable there and the one-on-one that you get with the classrooms, you know, I just, I think it would really hurt the school if we lost the 5th grade, and I hope that we can keep both of those things. They're part of what makes Whitewood so special. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Kennedy Carter.
Not expect me to be first. I really did not expect this. Okay. That's awkward, but okay. Okay, hello, my name is Kennedy Allison Carter, and I feel we should keep the 5th grade in Whitewood Elementary. Last year, you tried to take away our 5th grade, and years ago, you took 6th grade away. Mr. Porterfield is a very hands-on principal. He is involved with classes and knows every student at our school. He teaches STEM to students at our school. He even designs the STEM room. He even, he talks to us like we are family. Sometimes he comes outside with us, even goes on field trips with us. I would like for all of you to come out to our school for a visit so you can see how our days are here. I will be happy to give you a tour around our school, and I will explain why 5th grade should stay in Whitewood Elementary. I think you will conclude that our school is great as it is.
Thank you, Kennedy.
Allison Creed.
Hi. Obviously, she's my daughter, and I feel like she's received a great education in Whitewood, and I think taking the 5th grade away will definitely be, have a negative impact on the school, the community, future students. I didn't have anything pre-made, but a couple of people have mentioned some different things. And one of the things that I found interesting was that it is the poorest community that you have, and I feel like the students would be disadvantaged. Her father and I could afford to homeschool her. We could also afford to take her out of the district to another school. I think Whitewood predominantly is a working-class, poor community, and I feel like those students are going to be hurt disproportionately to other communities, other affluent communities, because they won't have the choice but to have to be committed to Sturgis or, but it's also not, my child has not guaranteed revenue for Mead County. Like, if 6th grade, she might go to Sturgis, she might not go to Sturgis. We might just pull her out because frankly, it's bothersome to me that I feel like Whitewood is a great school. They produce great students. They have a great principal. They have great teachers. And if you take the best from the best, then what are you showing that you provide for my student? I want a great education for Kennedy. You mentioned AI. It almost sounded like you were threatened by AI. I want my kid to build out AI. I mean, if anyone has any money in the stock market, we've all made money this year because of AI and AI companies, and that is where the future is. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creed.
Kelly Weiss Schultz.
All right, good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kelly Weiss Schultz, and I'm a proud advocate for Whitewood Elementary. My family and I are Mead County residents, and for the past three years, Whitewood Elementary has been home to our children, and we have seen firsthand the positive impact the school has on its students and the community. I know that throughout this decision-making process, you'll hear many statistics about Whitewood. Katie did a great job of that. Whitewood has been the only school in the district to show consistent growth over the past five years, with our kindergarten and first-grade classrooms being the largest in the district, a testament to our school's success. Much of this success can be attributed to leadership changes made five years ago when our principal transitioned to being president in the building five days a week. That shift has had an immeasurable impact. While some may argue that cutting our principal position is an option for saving costs, I question the long-term consequences. Without this administrative presence, I fear that we will see a decline in student performance, teacher satisfaction, and overall morale. As you all know, many of our district's teachers have already expressed strong opposition to these potential cuts, with every staff member at Whitewood Elementary signing a letter of concern. Mr. Porterfield, our current .5 principal, which is the lowest administrative position Whitewood has ever had, has taken on multiple roles, including a STEM teacher and administrator for the Homeschool Connection Program. He also is constantly applying for grants, putting on school functions. He's coached an after-school basketball club and attends every PTO meeting. He also happens to be my co-director for the $550,000 playground remodel project for the school that we're purely fundraising for. This kind of dedication is not something we can afford to lose. Regarding the financials, I've reviewed the initial budget projections, and while they indicate Whitewood may be $47,000 in the red, I believe that figure doesn't fully account for the Homeschooling Connection Program or Mrs. Olson's salary. When factoring those in, I estimate that Whitewood is actually in the green by about $100,000 to $120,000. Instead of focusing on cuts, I suggest we explore expanding the Homeschool Connection Program through high school. We could base it out of Whitewood offering a close-knit environment for homeschooling families while also bringing in additional revenue. Additionally, I understand there is a $600,000 allotted for the Woodell Field remodel. I would offer the consideration of postponing that project if possible and redirecting those funds to avoid extreme cuts. This would allow us to establish a nonprofit fund for extracurricular activities, playgrounds, and other community-driven initiatives that could gain strong support from local donors. In closing, I ask that you consider the long-term effects of cutting our principal position and eliminating our 5th grade class. When you assess the true financial impact, I believe you'll find that these cuts do not lead to savings, nor do they improve efficiency. I urge you to vote no, and instead look for opportunities to capitalize on Whitewood's strengths, ensuring a sustainable future for our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz.
Jason Rath.
Hi, I have three kids at the Whitewood School. It's an amazing school, amazing faculty. 5th grade is a vital part of the school and I think should stay. 5th graders, they just aren't quite ready for middle school at that point. That's been proven many times before. Mr. Porterfield is amazing at what he does and is vital to that school. I don't think he can be replaced. Whitewood will grow. It's, you know, it already is, and it'll continue. There's no reason to make, take steps back now. And same thing with the rural schools, there's no reason that budget cuts should be taken out on the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Will John Johnson.
Oh, you didn't? Okay.
Jen Aldrin.
Hi, I'm Jen Aldrin. I apologize, I came at short notice, so I didn't bring anything prepared. I'll just start off by saying that all of, everything I say is my own personal opinion, not a representation of any of my workplaces. So to tell you a little bit about myself, you've heard from my brother-in-law, Ryan Aldrin. I am married to Kelly Aldrin, and our family ranches outside of Whitewood. My husband graduated, or excuse me, went through school in Whitewood, South Dakota, and then it came into Sturgis, and that's where we both graduated. We've been married for about 18 years, met in high school, just like the South Dakota way, I guess. We have four kids. We have one child in second grade at the elementary school here in Sturgis. We call Sturgis our home currently. And then we have a middle school student in 6th grade, and then I have two kids in high school, a 9th grader and 10th grader. And I actually was just listening online on the YouTube link, and my high school daughter implored me to come and speak on her behalf, on our school district's behalf, and also on Britt Porterfield, who is my brother-in-law as well, because he is such a diamond in our school district. A little bit more background about me, I have a degree in elementary education as well as a bachelor's in nursing, and so I still have my South Dakota teaching certificate, but now I work at Monument Health as a clinical quality coordinator, where I utilize data for patient safety. And so I do work with a lot of numbers and administration, and one thing that I think is lacking in this planning is any plan for potential growth. So we have growth happening all over in Rapid City. In Spearfish, you see new businesses, new healthcare facilities going up, but we aren't intending for a plan for future students. I would say, Sturgis already feels rather full. When my kids started going to school, 5th grade was at the elementary school and have been, been getting shifted around since. So my younger son, the 6th grader, got to experience school in Sturgis. He has loved all of his teachers, but I think when you have a great talent like Britt Porterfield, you can't let that go away. He's irreplaceable. His compassion and care and time that he puts into the school, but also in the city of Whitewood cannot go unnoticed. He is a role model within religious groups as well as with youth in...
Sorry, Ms. Aldrin, your time's up.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
I oppose removing his position.
Jeremy Schmichael.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you guys so much for taking the time to hear everyone's concerns this evening. I stood before this board last year, shared some concerns about this very same issue in regards to Whitewood and removing the 5th grade, and so I just wanted to add on, I really value what Mr. Porterfield brings to the district. Not only am I opposed to obviously removal of the 5th grade, but to what Mr. Porterfield brings to the kids. My son goes to Whitewood, and my daughter graduated from Whitewood Elementary and had a tremendous experience. And instead of talking about my personal experience, actually, my daughter wrote a letter that I would like to read to the board. She is, she's very shy, so she didn't want to come read this herself, but I'm just gonna read this. This is in her words, so obviously, you know, keep that in mind. She's very young still. So, she says the 5th grade should stay at Whitewood because of how it would affect the kids. If they get rid of the 5th grade, the kids will have to go to a bigger school and may get exposed to a lot of things that they shouldn't be exposed to just yet. It'd also affect and most likely stress the parents that aren't ready for their kid to swap schools just yet. It might also separate friend groups and distance friends from each other unless they live nearby. Also, large schools can be more overwhelming for students and stress them out with homework or having to study more. I remember not having a lot of homework in Whitewood, and it was great. Also, Whitewood is a very nice and peaceful school. I'm sure if you ask the kids, they'd say something similar depending on their perspective of school. I also feel like the kids deserve to enjoy their elementary school experience while they have it, as it doesn't last forever. Also, the kids get a chance to enjoy the stuff that I got to do in 5th grade, like Starbase. I don't know if they still do that, though. There were also a lot of fun art projects that we did, and I remember the teacher was very good as well, and all sorts of fun matrix, like tic-tac-toe for multiplication. So just as a parent that has had a couple of kids in Whitewood and just how tremendous that school feels, please, I implore you, please, keep 5th grade in Whitewood and keep Mr. Porterfield there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Cory Smith.
All right, my name's Cory Smith. I come here as a parent of a student that's in first grade that goes to Whitewood, my daughter there, and four more kids that we have coming through the system that we are excited to get into that school. It's just, it's a beauty to be able to hear, just if you think of the size of the Whitewood School, having 120-some students, and the amount of times you've heard Britt Porterfield's name, and the amount of families that would be there, the percentage of people that care about what he is doing at that school is high, very high, right? Taking time off of their day and whatever may be going on, finding babysitters, whatever may be needed in order to support this man and what he's doing at that school. I want to bring a couple of points up just for your conversation that you will have when it comes to the budget and just reasonings behind keeping, keeping him there at this time. First, just thinking of points of immediate action or emergency situations that arise when you have people that are kind of put and pulled in two different places, if there was a rural principal at that time and he wasn't able to spend his whole time there. I know that as you go through, the bigger the school is, the more the administrative task it is for the principals, but the smaller the school, the more hands-on experience that there is with it, more involvement that he has, right? And he definitely has a hands-on approach. So, first, he helps with his teachers. I've heard from many parents in the community just how he has helped and integrated with his, with the students in the community, right? I have heard too, just the ways that he has handled disciplinary actions, and obviously with the loss of the principal, some of these may merely dwindle in that as to how much time a principal would be able to use, but some of it, like the emergency situations, you have to have somebody there at that time to help lead through the staff, the students, the staff that can't leave those students in the midst of it, whether it's a time where you have disciplinary actions where kid needs to be talked to, right? Or maybe it's emergencies, whether that's health, weather, any of the kind in which people need direction, and good direction at that in the moment as it comes. So, the question is, what would happen in these situations? That leads me to my other point with it. A lot of times what ends up happening, and everybody knows, a natural thing to happen when you cut a position or pull a position back, is that the responsibilities that happen with on that position end up putting, being put on the shoulders of others that are already there, that already have a full capacity to what they're doing. So where would it go? Would it happen to these, these teachers, the one-office staff, the people that are there, that they would then need to shoulder some of that time when the principal is not there, take that leadership in? How would they manage that? Would we compensate? And if so, if we are compensating for their time with that, where, where's the benefit of the cost in the midst of that? So, as we think through this, you've heard a lot from Britt Porterfield. I am obviously here wanting to also share my sentiment of saying, let's have the leader there every day of the week. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We are finished? Thank you, everyone, for your comments.
What's your name? Okay, come on up. I don't see it. Oh, okay, you didn't. Is there time?
We, we have time. Come.
Hi, I'm Allison Zucker. I teach 4th grade in Whitewood Elementary. This is behalf of all of us as a staff at Whitewood. We are writing to express our deep concern and strong opposition to the proposed budget saving measures that include eliminating our 5th grade and reassigning principal Porterfield. If implemented, the changes will not only disrupt the stability and success of Whitewood Elementary, but will also have lasting negative consequences for the broader Mead School District. Removing 5th grade from our school and pushing those students into an already overcrowded Sturgis 5th grade classroom is not sustainable or student-focused. Our current 5th grade program is a vital part of our school's academic and social environment, and it provides developmentally appropriate transition for students before they enter middle school in a setting where... before they enter middle school in a setting where they are known and supported. Forcing these students into a large unfamiliar setting undermines their learning and emotional well-being. This move also causes families to reconsider their place in the district. We've already heard from parents who are prepared to leave Mead entirely if these changes occur. This will directly result in declining enrollment and funding, which is the very budget concerns these proposals aim to address. Equally concerning is the suggestion to remove Mr. Porterfield from his current full-time role at Whitewood Elementary. It, we require a full-time principal, not a shared administrator. The idea of part-time leadership will lead to inevitable chaos from unresolved behavior issues to a decline in staff morale and parent trust. Our students deserve a consistent, visible leader who is present daily to support staff, students, and families. Mr. Porterfield is a respected and effective leader who has built strong relationships within our school and community. Reassigning him would not only be a disservice to our school, but also destabilize multiple other schools in the process. Rural schools also deserve full-time leadership as much as any other school in the district. Spreading one principal across several schools serves none of them well. While we understand the financial pressure the district faces, short-sighted cuts such as these will ultimately do more harm than good. We are, we urge the board to seek alternative cost-saving measures to not dismantle the fabric of our schools or jeopardize student learning and staff retention. Whitewood Elementary is a thriving essential part of your district. We ask that you prioritize maintaining a full pre-K through fifth with full-time leadership. Investing in our school now will save the district future costs related to enrollment loss, staff turnover, and declining community trust. Thank you for your attention to this matter. We look forward to a decision that reflects the best interest of all students in Mead School District.
Thank you.
Tammy Hannan.
Whenever you're ready. Hi, I'm Tammy Hannan. Um, I just wanted to speak really quickly back on the rural schools. Um, I did come from the rural school, so did my father and my grandfather, um, before him. Um, I did also want to say that when it comes to saving budgets with closing the schools, I'm curious about the revenue that the kids bring to the school districts. I represent five of my own. I have three sons that will be going into Hereford, and also my two nephews will be going into Hereford. I'm also standing here after speaking to most of the parents at Hereford, knowing that at least two-thirds of the kids that go to Hereford will leave the school district, meaning the revenue that those kids bring to the school district will be gone. Um, although yes, you will save money from that. I know that we can't be the only ones. I'm sure the other schools that are um planning to be closed, their parents would be moving them out of the school district, which is reducing your revenue, which does not help save the budget, um, reduce the budget overall. So that's all I can say.
Thank you.
Ellie Brook would like to speak.
Hello, my name's Ellie Brook and I go, I'm an eighth grader at the Atoll School. And I just really think that we we should find something else to do other than closing down our schools. Um, just find something else to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are none.
Item seven, recognitions. Seven A, character education word of the month. The October character trait of the month is responsibility, which includes accountability, thinking before taking action, and doing what you are supposed to do. Item eight, presentations. Eight A, Sturgis Brown High School Purple Star designation. Sturgis Brown High School has recently earned the Purple Star designation, recognizing it as a strong commitment to students and families affiliated with our national military. This designation confirms that Sturgis Brown High School has fulfilled all of the qualification criteria for this honor. Mr. Wilson will provide a brief presentation on the Purple Star process. Mr. Sullivan.
Hello, Mr. Wilson. I have been called Mr. Wilson a few times, that's all right. Again, thank you, guys. Sturgis Brown High School is excited to, we have completed all the components to be a Purple Star High School, which then means that we are making a commitment and showing our military families that'll be coming in a really safe and uh environment for their children to go to school. With our close proximity to Ellsworth Air Force Base, our large South Dakota National Guard, we have a number of students who are impacted by the military who attend Sturgis Brown High School. We do commend Superintendent Wormstead, his efforts in insisting that all the schools in the Mead School District working towards implementing this program. We also want to thank Dr. Olson, Mrs. Christensen, and Mr. DeShaw, who also have Purple Star implemented in their buildings. What we have in place right now, we have our school liaisons, myself, uh Mrs. Valentine and Mrs. Kuntz, the administrators, obviously, Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Kepler, and myself. Our Y L T, which is our youth leadership team, under the direction of our counselors, will be the welcoming committee. And then Ms. Judy Wise, our registrar, will make sure we know all of our military families. All of the high school staff have completed the learning modules presented by Penn State University in order to educate our staff to help with our military students. Our Y L T team is ready, and then we will be celebrating the month of Military Child, Purple Up Day, and April. We also have our website updated, which acknowledges that we are a Purple Star school. Thank you, guys, for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Item eight B, presentation of deficit corrections for fiscal year twenty-seven. Superintendent will present the deficit correction corrections recommendations for the fiscal year twenty-seven to address the one-point-two-five-million-dollar deficit. Mr. Wormstead is recommending scheduling a school board meeting on Monday, October twenty-seventh, at five-thirty PM to receive public input on the proposed budget corrections. Each item proposed will be placed on the agenda for individual discussion and community input at that time. Mr. Wormstead.
Okay. Um, this year I was tasked with starting a process for us to look at our budget corrections, which we actually had our discussions in June and July for the board to move forward. And with that, we looked at our process, was going to uh look at revenue, efficiencies, and actual budget cuts with that. So I'll talk a little bit more about that, why we're here, first of all. And if you've had a chance, did you look at the last work session with the data that we had in there? I have it linked here just in case, so anybody else has that, um, to see where we're at, what's taking place, and then I can provide more historical data that anybody asked for too. So FY twenty-six, which is our twenty-five-twenty-six school year, was built on a three-thousand-twenty-eight full-time equivalent student budget, which is the same we had for the previous two years with that. Our count day now shows twenty-nine forty-eight. Earlier, we had a note in here that we thought it's gonna be twenty-nine seventy, but that's twenty-nine forty-eight, that's an eighty-student drop. For round numbers, it's about seventy-seven-hundred dollars. We use seventy-five-hundred dollars as a revenue source, because we're never long on revenue that way per student that we lose for that. So the budget was built on a six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-dollar deficit based on thirty-twenty-eight, which we are going to pull over from our reserves to make this work for this fiscal year and then work this process, what we're going to do in the future. That is now changed to a one-point-two-five-million-dollar budget because of loss of revenue, because of loss of eighty students from our planned process with that. So I won't go into, the work session agenda is here, but I have a presentation on budget enrollment, which shows where our enrollment is, class sizes, section sizes, everything that we have there, cost per building, what's our revenue per building within that, um, going through the entire pro area. And to answer that question earlier about that, we do cost out every student by where they're at for homeschool connections and expense that, so Whitewood doesn't get extra expenses for that, but gets revenue counted towards that building as Sturgis Williams does, et cetera. Um, then I put a budget timeline in here for that as a general guide for this uh board to look at. And budget changes within that, we're looking at enrollment, enrollment by building, by grade, average class size, revenue expenses by building, and per people, including our school location map. In July, the board directed me not to rank order our cuts, but to give me, to build a plan that shows revenue, efficiencies, and um reductions and cuts. So right now, the increase in revenue is proposed three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar tax increase. We thought that would be about two-hundred to two-fifty. We know we need to go for three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to um lessen the blow on this. That will actually be discussed in just a second. Reductions and cuts is proposed about four-hundred-thousand dollars, and efficiencies are proposed for four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. These are nice, round, easy numbers for this right here. Unknown unknown future financial factors that we have to deal with in the district. Um, what will increase, what will increase in state general education funding be from the legislature? I was in a meeting with superintendents, the Department of Revenue, and the Department of, uh, the head of the budget, uh, Mr. Twillinger, earlier last week. And right now, um, revenue for the state is down by about seventeen percent. Ag revenue taxes on equipment is down twenty-three percent and twenty percent over the year before, so I have two years down because of um there. So the state's looking at very little that they're gonna be able to give us. Last year, they gave us one-point-two-five. We expect to and plan to budget for next year with a one-point-two-five, hoping that's what it is for next year. Currently also, we have to look but worry about our federal funding. We went in twenty-twenty through about twenty-twenty-three, we were getting money just thrown at schools um during the COVID time area. That time has gone. The district added four FTEs during that time. Teachers and a couple counselors for that. So the president and the House of Representatives have proposed budget cuts to title funding. That's our title funding that serves both Whitewood and Sturgis Elementary and an estimated loss of two-hundred-thousand dollars, which we don't feel is gonna fall in Title One, but from what their proposal far is gonna fall in Title Two and Title Four. That'll be north of two-hundred-thousand dollars, but what that does is we use Title Two Part A and that consolidation of funds there to provide for four teachers at Piedmont Valley Elementary School, which has large class sizes already. So we feel with the efficiency that our federal government works in, we will find that information out way late, and we're gonna have to carry that over next year out of our reserves also. Um, we don't think that we're gonna have a information on that soon enough to make a informed decision what's gonna take place. All right. Increased revenue, and I was actually asked by a patron through email, what other increased revenue options we have? I have one that's not on here, because every time I bring it up, I do not get very favorable reviews. Um, what's not on here is an opt-out of the tax base by voter approval or board approval and then forced by the taxpayers of one-point-five million. That's a half-mill increase per um thousand dollars of valuation on that. Um, that actually solves a problem for about three to five years on this whole thing. But what we're, I propose to do is increase local property tax through capital outlay and transfer those funds, which we're allowed to by law, over to general fund to make the budget work. Increase revenue, reduce number of staff reduction, additional school closures for FY twenty-seven. Revenue increase of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars comes across. Timeline, um, will be proposed now, but the board does not act on that until they set the levy adjustment um at July board meeting. Effects, quite frankly, is a tax increase. Nobody in here thinks that they're paying too little in taxes. We know that what that does to all of our taxpayers. That was the first thing I listed on this. Efficient operations with same educational opportunities. So as I went through and looked at what we're gonna do, first thing I said is, how can we be more efficient? And the first way is natural attrition, or you can encourage attrition. I am proposing the board use a one-time transfer from capital outlay to do early retirement incentives, it's on the agenda for approval. This would save approximately ten-thousand dollars per teacher moving forward. And if we don't have to replace that teacher, that's a full absorption, which may help us meet our budgetary goals with this. Um, when you look at this, this is probably with the way the state and the feds are working, it's a two- to three-year problem. This is the first step that we're going to have in trying to solve our budgetary concerns with the U.S. Census seeing students lower and lower across the country. And I'll talk about that a little bit later at the very end about this kindergarten enrollment trends, what it shows us. All right, so back to this, so we expect ten-thousand per teacher. We have an approved MOU at this board meeting. Teachers have to res uh submit this by December seventeenth. We will then approve those in January. That will help us set our our target, so we don't have to reduce staff. It's called reduction in force for that, hopefully. And then natural attrition, where we do have families that somebody moves back home, moves because their spouse has a job elsewhere, we'll try to absorb those naturally through attrition also to set our budget up better. All right, the first one, combine Whitewood and rural principal. This position was split in twenty-two-twenty-three, school year was previously one position for the district for quite um uh many years. Uh, combining will lower the administration by point-one-five and reduce a teaching position um out in the rural, that's by point-four-five, that's shared with the principal position that's out there also. That affects the general fund. This would be returned to our previous practice when we were under three-thousand students. This position was split when we had over three-thousand students is one that occurred. So trying to return to back pre-two-zero-twenty with that. Effects is travel between sites with at less time and locations and everything probably everybody said tonight, of course, too. Uh, board decision would be about, the latest can be its February board meeting for us to move forward with that decision. Um, next one is move Whitewood fifth grade to Sturgis Williams Middle School. If you looked at the enrollment charts and what we have across the district, we can offer the same education opportunities and class size similar to the current middle schools in fifth grade and align all elementaries along the ninety-quarter of the K-four settings. It is savings about sixty-four-thousand dollars. When you see that number repeated, that's an assumption that we'd absorb a and not fill a position from a first-year teacher. We would not hire somebody to fill that with that. Our experienced teachers with the RIF process will have jobs, and they'll just be moved possibly if if necessary with that. Um, effect in class size estimate is twenty-two-eight to twenty-five-point-eight, which is in the range that we've been running our other middle school, fifth grade classes, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classes with that. And we run, if you look at the charts, a lot of our elementary classes in the twenty-twos to twenty-fours over the past four years, and we began kindergartens in twenty-two to twenty-three at Element at Piedmont Valley and Sturgis Elementary. Right now, we're seeing the effects of enrollment for kindergarten. I will explain that kindergarten enrollment, what we've seen here for trends when people look at what's taking place across the district. This year, we had one more kindergarten student than we had seniors graduate last year. Last year, we had twenty-nine more kindergarten students that graduated the previous year. If you look at the previous five years before that, we had ninety-six to one-hundred-and-forty kindergartners more than our exiting graduating class. Currently, what's taking place is that bulk of students are moving through that fifth through senior high, and we're starting to see that drop as part of that. It's small right now, but weigh the U.S. Census if we are not attracting students through homeschool connections, through the military expansion that takes place, and continue our high open enrollment numbers, which is over a hundred-and-forty a year net versus what goes out that comes in to our district, primarily from the Rapid area is the number-one driver for that. Um, this will cause more complicated issues with that. And we'll see a lot of our class sizes change, and we'll have to make adjustments. Next piece is closure at Atoll and Hereford Schools. Um, review of student enrollment, costs, and proximity to Central Mead School. Um, we're looking at the same education opportunities and continuing low student-to-teacher ratio that can be offered at CMCS and serve the twenty twenty students displaced. Savings about two-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars through the absorption of two teachers, four paraprofessionals, and operating expenses. The timeline, by law, this must be completed by December first. If you looked at the timeline, it has a link to the law and what takes place and what we have to do. Students will be assigned to CMCS. It's gonna increase some class sizes with current offerings. It will make our multiple-grade teachers have quite a few more students. There's a possibility if we have too many come there, we'd actually retain and reopen that section we had last year, which we had a opportunity to absorb a teaching position at Piedmont Valley by moving a teacher from CMCS, because they went from about forty-nine students down to thirty-seven. So we did that as a natural attrition. Increased travel costs, which I'll talk about in a second, the possible um savings, but there'll be increased cost or mileage paid for that. Currently, we pay about forty-thousand dollars a mileage to the rural area to get their kids to school and run two bus routes. The district is currently researching providing transportation for Atoll and Hereford and continuing to provide the two routes for CMCS. Rational in order to serve the two area schools with consistent transportation CMCS, the district will be quoting for a new bus service contract that's up this year. Um, and allows us, the district, to take responsibility for this routing with non-CDL drivers. We feel that with what the current service we're receiving um in the rural from our current provider, that the district can exceed that with our efforts here and do it less expensive. Decision need to be by January board meeting. Purchase of vans and small buses would be through capital outlay, not affecting the general fund cost with that, and allows that to first over time. We will need to have three to four rural drivers for that. Now we get into straight reductions and cuts. Um, reduction supplies, professional development, after-school supports, reduction in supply items, evaluate our professional development to reduce needs, sub-supervised activities, student supports with minimum impact and student opportunities. We have a long list of items. We know the minimum number is fifty thousand, we'll probably have to hit higher than that way it looks. Um, this will be reductions of the middle schools for after-school program, uh, high school for after-school program, that's a tutoring. Uh, high school for after-school program. That's a tutoring programs that we run at the two larger ones. Um, it'll be reduction of activities, um, and consolidation of that activities, activity coaches. Um, whether it be fine arts or athletic within those areas if necessary across the board. Um, we don't have a lot of room in our supply budget without asking our teachers to pick up even more. Two thousand twelve, thirteen, when the state cut education by ten percent. The Mead District got very frugal across the board with that and has done a very good job of trying to, trying to supply what they have there. We don't have a lot of room that people think. Our budget is about eighty percent is people. Then you had about four percent on for contracted service, five percent for contracted services. And then you have your other maintenance and everything else to do. Our costs are generated by services to kids. So that's where our main drivers at. We're looking at self-insuring of buildings. We currently have to go to a second provider for eleven buildings because they won't insure them due to age for that. So we're looking at how we can save those premiums, um, for that. Instead of purchasing that secondary insurance, which is about three and a half, almost four times the rate of our regular property liability insurance to do that. With that though, we'll have to carry a larger fund reserve, emergency fund there for five hundred thousand dollars for wind hail damage that takes place there. Next thing is reduction of talented and gifted program. Uh, elimination, this program will not increase class sizes across any building, does not change core instruction for all students, savings about sixty-four thousand dollars. That would be done by the March board meeting, eliminates the program for a hundred and twenty-four students in grades one through eight. We looked, I looked at other programs with that, but that's the one program that doesn't also give teachers preparation time. And it's consistently offered to every student. Music program, PE are all offered to every student STEM class. So. We thought it was best at this time to try to keep those intact as much as possible. The unknown is the two FT teachers overall across that and that. White Wood one will probably be absorbed, of course, up there at the fifth grade, but I listed those there, um, across the board. We don't know exactly yet until we see the retirements and natural attrition that takes place of where we can naturally absorb positions. Um, shift class sizes, uh, reduce the number of sections at Piedmont Valley. Um, Sturgis Elementary, Sturgis Williams or other areas, which would increase their class sizes in order to do that. Um. If you see all, you know, all the personnel reductions, that'd be March first. That's because of a state law has to be done and delivered by April fifteenth if we have to do a reduction in force. Um, reduction of counselor, one point oh FTE. We added two. FTEs and counseling was added during, uh, COVID with using SFR funds. Those funds are gone. We have not absorbed any of those yet and funding that since lapsed since two thousand twenty, about sixty-eight thousand dollars. The March board meeting, that's a direct impact on access to support for students, counseling, mental health and guidance. This is the first thing that I would recommend returning to our school district on the list. The other ones, a safety concern piece, elimination, the contract of school resource officer services from Somerset PD. This is to mirror what we currently do in Sturgis. It would eliminate that contract and we'd share a position between Piedmont Valley and Somerset. The same that we'd currently do with Sturgis Elementary and Sturgis Williams Middle School for that. Um, you look at the numbers there in two thousand twenty, we were paying about eighty-three thousand dollars for that because we had a lot of grant dollars. That now because grants have gone away, we're north of two hundred thousand dollars and continue to grow. As the city law enforcement, county law enforcement sees increased costs, we pay our share for that at this time. So. In order to put us, you know, right now we have five SROs across our district. Okay. Um, serving our eleven different buildings with one county person that tries to serve those as well as better. Um, White Wood Police Chief, um, is available and close by all the time. We do not have an SRO in that building or the rural buildings with that. We know response time, safety situations with shared and relationship between law enforcement is one of the best things we see by having SROs in the building. Is students, we're able to be in relationships with our school resource officers. Now. Board, I laid out all this. I know I've sent this to you a little bit earlier. It's gone through finance committee. Time to ask the questions and. On this.
So there's been a lot of people that brought up and that future enrollments will be higher. Um, do we know what our population trends in the districts are? And that conference that I went to this summer talked, so this is a compounding question, talked about declining enrollment. So we see a lot of districts, especially in South Dakota, that are having to close down their neighborhood schools and, and combine like Sturgis did. Fifteen years ago in, in Sturgis proper to get rid of all the neighborhood schools to find those efficiencies. Do we face declining enrollment in our district like what the other districts in South Dakota are seeing? And do we know what our population trend is going to be in the next five years, ten years?
So we did a census study in two thousand twenty-three that was released that shows that we have about thirty-five hundred students across our district. We also show that, um, we received three hundred ninety-two, or three hundred and, at that time, I think it's about three hundred and sixty open enrolled students. If you want an accurate number, I can pull that up on my computer and chart everything. Um, but when that comes through, we lose about two hundred and twenty. So we've been plus one. Forty-ish on average every year for open enrolls. We're a net gain there. So that's where our students are coming in. What we have is with that thirty-five hundred students, the state tells us, which is one of the most inaccurate reports because it starts with. Thirteen to fifteen hundred students on it. They say we have a little over five hundred students that are homeschooling out of our district. So we looked at, um, net area that we're losing that, that's where we're starting to lose that population. Plus the US Census shows birth rates declining. South Dakota is one of the few states that has a positive birth rate, but that birth rate that's positive is happening in the Sioux Falls area and the reservations. Is what the trend data shows with anomalies in different areas. So what's that mean? That means about one in seven of our students that, uh, according to the state. And this is one of the most inaccurate spreadsheets I've ever seen, but they think we have five hundred plus. That's one in seven of our students are homeschooling. That's hence why I brought to the board, asked them to pilot and, and Brett has done a good job leading that is the. Um, homeschool connection program to try to make that connection. Many districts fight with homeschool. My view is that that homeschool parent may be the business owner, community leader in our district. May end up having a future kid that actually teaches within the district. Those connections are important. For that and how do we serve our students within our district? So that's the basis of our two-year pilot or our second year of our pilot with. Decisions we have to reach around January, February about how we want to expand that program. So when you look at that, that's, that's our census trend across the state and give you more information. Uh, the largest schools in the state, there's an association called Large School Group that has about twenty-three districts in it. There are four districts that are growing, um, population this year and continue to. Brookings, Harrisburg, Douglas School District, and this year T was flat, which first time ever they have not grown. Another one is Belfus, they grew by one student. Okay. We were on that trend group too. Other districts were on that trend group. They're starting to see that dip that's taking place. I use Watertown as example. They lost a hundred and forty students this year and they're about eight hundred students down over the last six years. Um, they've closed schools and had to go through that, that in a large district such as that also. Did I answer enough of that or did I give you too much information? I probably gave you too much.
No.
Why is that report so inaccurate?
Um, because what the state has zero accountability for homeschooling. So all you have to do to homeschool is go online. Fill out the form, submit it with your email address and there's no contact required ever again. I mean, ever again. So we have people that moved out of our district. We've had people that filled it out multiple times. We have people that we have no idea if they're come gone or anything else across that. So we don't know if they're getting an education. We don't know if they're safe. We have no idea. And so our list comes out between thirteen and fifteen hundred names on it. And then the state comes through it somehow. Because some of those have aged out and says, yeah, we had five hundred and twenty last year. We can track the ones that we've received and we know about. Currently that, but it was such a wild, wild west on that initial start. We don't have accurate. I shouldn't say, we don't have trustworthy data on that and the state knows it and they're not changing it. It's known statewide on them. I can give you a home, another interesting homeschool number. Rapid City is the largest last year at twelve hundred plus, followed by Sioux Falls, followed by Douglas. Followed by us, followed by Spearfish. The I nine, I ninety-quarter quarter, according to the state has twenty-seven hundred students that are homeschooling. I'm not in opposition to school choice. There's twenty-seven hundred kids. That's the, you know, that'd be the third largest district in the state in the Black Hills. At that time. So there's a disconnect that we gotta figure out as school, public schools of how we connect back to that. I know Rapid City is trying their homeschool connection program. Belfus has copied what we're doing their first year. So what we're doing, I think is on the right track there. And we have the population in our district to actually serve and try to serve.
Okay, I have some things to say. What it looks like here, just by my count is about fourteen teachers, two schools, a principal, counselors. Um, additional staff to about the tune of one point two million dollars and that's annually. So I understand that. That these cuts are, are harsh and that they are. That without them, we can't sustain our school system. I have a question to ask both you guys. I'm going to ask out loud in, in here, and that is the funding of the football field. That's the football field. We've already put six hundred thousand dollars down on. I understand that. And I understand that this was something that has been in the works for quite some time. With that being said, there's still an additional six hundred thousand dollars that we haven't spent on. And when I grew up around here, we used to fundraise for things like football. I would love to see full throttle football being played on Harley Davidson Field. That would be great in, in the city of Sturgis. These foot, or these fundraising things should be for extracurricular activities. If we are, if we have a permanent problem here. Then we have to redesign the way that we collect funds. And so as we're looking through this thing, I'm thinking maybe we could do a committee that would help us raise these funds. So that we don't have to redesign fundraising every year. I know usually it's like a. PTAs or something like that that would all get together. Maybe we could do it on the board. But I think it's important that we actually consider using those funds to help. The current crisis that we are in and very much it looks like a crisis to me.
So the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be a one-time allocation moved over. So it would not solve the long-term problem that you have there. We also have eighty-plus activities taking place on that and we are in a. The need of the field has to either be re-sodded and then probably done every six or seven years. Or turf for double the length and then for that. So that was an economic decision that also took into the fact that. Um, the amount of hours we put into maintenance down there during the fall can be sixty to eighty man-hours a week. Plus we put thirty to forty during the summer with grass and everything else. So that was the basis of how we started this conversation, I think in. Fall of twenty-three, if I look back at the board, uh, minutes on that, that we started the conversation about the buildings and grounds. It was originally started in about two thousand twelve, thirteen.
Yeah, it was started when the board, um, agreed to adopt soccer. And so we needed a transition plan for soccer and we had no place to play. And so it was brought to that point at that time to consider turfing a little field for the additional usage. As well as develop practice facilities, the high school because of, of the limited number of, of athletic fields in. And, and the Sturgis community and surrounding communities, to be honest. Uh, and at that time it was, uh, the cost was about half. Um, and at that point the district had about thirty percent of that in other revenue shared that would have been brought to that project as well. At that time, the board did not feel like doing it. So they voted it down.
So where we're at with that, so, um, we had a, a very good lengthy meeting. Um, we had, um, uh, Mick Trask and Joe Urbannick and. Um, Joe Trask asked for a meeting that with the Secretary of Education about some rural options and things like that. So we host that meeting here at their request and, um, probably the best idea I've heard so far is actually from. Uh, Dr. Graves, Secretary of Education, used to be the Superintendent of Mitchell, similar size to us. When they started looking at closure of schools because of enrollment things, they, they chose to do a, um, an opt-out. But the other thing that schools are actually looking at now is actually foundations that cover the difference for different areas. That is a stretch for communities to say, we're going to raise foundational money for that, for their schools, though they see a better response for it. Um, if you want to start a foundation to support activities that would lessen the burden on other areas within that, that's something we consider. I mean, if the board wants to go down that path with it, yes, I don't think we'll have a very good chance of. A, a signed contract with half down to stop that process unless we fundraise and we fundraise one-time money. Once again, one-time money. So if we're not talking school foundational level gifts that are endowments that, in perpetuity that are controlled and targeted. Okay. Whether it be education by school building, by activities or whatever else, I say we need to figure out what we want to do there. Um, I don't think you're going to get out of that contract.
When, when we go and look for sponsorships. Can we go ask Harley Davidson for one point three million dollars? If we did what? If we have, or if we did, what is the response to that? Because I think I know what it is, but I'm.
Well, and we haven't asked Harley Davidson or anybody for one point three million dollars, but if we go out and do that, let's say you raise one point three million dollars to install this now. What they do is come in as a revenue source that could be allocated to pay for that purchase and you'd have extra reserves in your capital outlay fund, not general fund. That means that would come over on a one-time expense. You're seeing why we're not moving capital outlay as a one-time expense. Because that just gives a Band-Aid for a year. You're right back here again. That's why we're trying to use increased new revenue. Yes, increased taxes to fill that ongoing gap. Looking first of the first three years to do that, because if you don't have an ongoing revenue source, you're going to have, um, shortfall cliffs that are going to be. Uh, exasperate the problem. You have what you had last year, plus you know, the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, plus you didn't made no decisions. Which means then you have a bigger number that might be one point eight the next year to take care of. I mean, making no decision is probably the worst decision you have at this point, doing this for a couple decades is. That will only compound our issues for that. We are trying to recruit students. We're trying to figure out how we, we can do that. We're going to face two things, homeschooling and a population decline. First, if you look at the census study that we have on the website, it's people that have gray hair like me. Fifty-plus years old, their last kids graduating or as graduated. That's the majority of people buying homes in the community. It's, we have young people moving in, but not the clip to replace the birth rate at this time. Hopefully that changes. Ellsworth gives us a chance, development in Sturgis and other areas, but that can be a three to seven-year cycle before we see that as an impactful. So how do you do that?
To be clear, Brett, maybe you can help answer this, but what is the cost for the delay? Of a football field? Do we know those costs? Is it in the contract? What are they?
The delay or the, the, the voiding of the contract?
It's in the contract that that would void?
No, I'm asking, Tom, are you saying to delay?
I'm asking for a delay. Correct. So that we can fundraise. What is, what is the cost to that?
Question. I don't have an answer.
We don't have an answer to that. And, and.
We should find one.
Well, here, here's the thing. The board voted nine-zero to move forward with a legal binding contract. If the board wants us, direct us to research or get out of a contract, that's going to take a motion by the board to do. Currently, we are following the board's direction and wishes. And explained this to you on the phone says, I'm not in a position to say after the board makes a nine-O decision to do something to say. I'm going to go off on a different tangent and, and break my ethical code or whatever it's not supposed to do. So that'd be a board decision to do that if that's a solution they want to look at.
And real quick, I'd like to step back and, and really break this down to very simple. The state outlines how we spend money. Like, yes, there's a big pot of money and it sits in a bank account. And some of it is earmarked as capital outlay. Some of it is earmarked, earmarked for special education. Some of it is earmarked for general fund. And the state has delineated what those funds are exactly for. And what we should be spending that money on to make sure that we don't get to a point where our facilities are in disrepair. And when, when we went nine-O on that decision, we knew that we had a budget, a general fund problem coming up. The, we knew that this problem was coming up and we have tried to figure out what those solutions and, and Wayne. Um, and Mr. Burdett have done a very diligent job to try and figure out how to solve the, the general fund problem. But you don't take from your capital outlay, which is meant to, um, keep your facilities in good repair. To, to fund your irresponsible spending in the general education. Um, that, that would be like you taking your savings account and, and going out to dinner on it because you want to go out to dinner that night. That, that's not good practice. Um, so we did make a decision, nine-O. To, to spend out of capital outlay, which our capital outlay fund is healthy, to repair a facility in our district. That needed work no matter what. We were going to spend money on it no matter what. So we either spent seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars to put new grass on it and then. and then go and fix it in six to 10 years, hopefully get 15 years out of it. Or spend 1.2 million to go turf and get a longer life out of it. And then we can have more activities utilizing that facility. So I think we really have to step back and understand we're talking about two completely different concerns here. We have a general fund concern that needs to be addressed, and we have to work on that. We have to continue using capital outlay to keep our buildings in good condition, or we will end up like other districts where you do and ask for substantial amounts of money to go in and repair your facilities because you misuse those monies to fund bad practices.
So I'll give you an example, and I'll just name the district. It's Rapid City Area School District at one time was trying to meet their budgetary needs. They transferred the majority of their capital outlay to meet their general fund as much as they could, about 40%. And then they went into a major crisis at their facilities, and now they're looking at 160 to 200 million dollar bond referendum. They're going to try passing. I give Brett and future or passports a lot of credit to make sure they didn't put themselves in that. That's why this 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 transfer of 350,000 dollars for the school board I'm asking is a big deal. You cannot survive on this long term. Why? 47% of our capital outlay funds go to debt. The rest goes to curriculum, facility repairs such as roofs, doors, windows, all the basis stuff you'd do with your home. So when you look at that, there is not a lot of margin for that. And currently, we've been under 11 in that. And Brett and I come up with the number right now about 350,000 dollars that we can move over to support this. Three years, maybe longer. But you don't want to do that at the detriment of your facilities. This is like school financing 101 to be safe. You don't transfer funds on an ongoing basis if you don't have to. So I'll give you another thing about how efficient. I don't know. Did I say this earlier? We are compared to other districts our size?
You did not.
We are the only district. First of all, we're 143rd. If you look at that other stuff, out of 148 districts and per cost per student. We are driving a very efficient district, even with the number of facilities we have. No other district has our size has the number of facilities. We are very unique, not just to the state, but to the country. For our size of population and what we do. No other district, we're the only district of the large group that does not have a maximum levy in capital outlay. Does not have a maximum levy in special education. Does not yet transfer funds to capital outlay and over. Does not have an opt out of the tax. And does not have an voter approved referendum to build buildings. The previous boards and business manager did a great job of making sure they managed that very important resource capital outlay, not not to go down that very easy place. Their school districts using 40%. Can't figure out, get out of the hole. And now are worrying about how they're going to take care of facilities. So they dug an extra hole for them in a different area. So to move just that 350 is a is a big step, in my opinion. Professional opinion on that. And people disagree and say milk it and keep your general fund and then take care of your buildings in 10 years of the bond or something like that. You have to pass a bond at 60% approval to raise people's taxes. Anybody here want to raise, lead the charge on a 60% approval for a building or an opt out right now in the state of South Dakota? We're doing the best with the resources we have, and that's why we're here. We want to hear the input. And I want questions from the board about other things they want us to look into, because in my professional opinion, this is the best path to consistency of of a general fund budget that can provide services across the district.
So this will be my last thing on that. Can I ask the board then to call a vote on whether we can look into postponing the football field and what costs would be what cost would come with that? Is that something I can do here and now officially?
It wouldn't be an action item. You need to put it on either the next meeting or the regular meeting for that to direct us to do that. And the second thing would be step two would be if you found the information the board thought was useful to do that, then you would then have to have a vote of some type of delay or contract after you found all three repercussions of that.
Can we do that? Can we put that on the board meeting for next time?
I guess we're going to need a that's an action item that I would need a motion and a second to even consider.
So the getting over a cold. So your procedure with that, you can, the board chair can put something on the agenda. What I'd first do is contact Eric Neese, our attorney, to make sure we do that appropriately. To do the, you know, doing the research through board motions, not the issue. Your issue is the next part. Do you have to rescind the motion to break the contract or ever make a motion to break the contract? Now, I'm going to tell you again, this is a one time fix that delays a needed repair that the district's been looking at for over a decade. If this was a roof, we have a million plus dollars in roofs coming up too, that aren't contracted. It'd be easier for you to say, let's not fix Piedmont Valley's roof. And not cost you attorney fees and possible breach of contract and everything else with that. You could do in our capital outlay budget that we're prepping right now, the buildings and grounds committee is seeing that we're going to be doing some doors and windows at the high school and other areas. We could slow down our school security project. There's a lot of areas in that. If you want to move one time money to try to put a short term bandage on this problem. I'm going to tell you, it's a short term problem. A short term solution to a long term fix. That's what it is. And I will work at the board's discretion on what they choose to tell us to do.
What types of ideas or items do we have on a list anywhere for the recruitment of students? I mean, I know birth rates and homeschool, but like, are we looking at ways that would get more students to our district?
So in the spring, I'll talk about that last, but right now, we'll be talking in December and January about the expansion of homeschool connections. How do we get more students from the valley area? Currently, right now, our primary drivers are Sturgis Williams Middle School and the students that go online to Whitewood. Of the 51 students, we get about 28.5 FT for funding. I think we're slightly higher in that because we had a kid transfer from Sturgis Williams, I believe it was over to there just recently after account day. So one, we expand that K eight district wide. How can we serve more families that are requesting that access? We'll have to explore the high school option, high school option with that, which has merit, but the problem is, is that is a licensing nightmare for that to serve that. You need about two teachers, so you double your cost for the number you're serving. We have to look in and see if that's going to be financially responsible to do that. Other areas, the big one was we started two years or three years ago was the Purple Star Raid Schools. There's only two in the state districts that are doing this. That's of course Douglas and us. The largest growth for military families looking for is no longer Rapid Valley. It's actually coming up towards Somerset and along I 90 and north near Haynes. As we're talking to the military liaison about that a year ago. So that's our push. You have our entire district that's rated Purple Star to see as a thing because my I have family members in the military. First thing you do is look at area schools. They're pulling up whether or not they're Purple Star School for that as a place they want to be in case, as Douglas is getting very crowded and can't build buildings. With that, my third option that the board will look at and consider this spring is a discussion about extending our bus routes to bring in more open enrolled students by going into north of interstate along Rapid City. That'd be a spring discussion. We have to approach Rapid City with that. We have to do a whole process with it. They have to approve. If they don't approve, we have to go to the State Department of Education. When we, as people say here, I do know when decisions are made, people change districts. When Canyon Lake closed, we received about 30 students, student families that drive to our bus stops in different areas, Weston Heights and that to bring their kids all the way to Piedmont Valley. I get approached every year about more students coming to Piedmont Valley and Sturgis. Our Stage Bar Middle School, if we provided transportation out of North Rapid, you think Lowe's and North of that area. And those developments there. So that's that's the other one that considering.
I know you have a lot of knowledge.
It's 40 students we had from Canyon Lake.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I thought she was talking to me. She wasn't.
My next question along those lines is, I know you have a lot of knowledge of four day school weeks. Would that is that something that would save money? How much money could it be implemented?
So when we did our strategic planning, that was probably the number one outcome that our staff was looking at. And we saw considerably quite a few community members that did the survey, explored the possibility of four day school week. I did research on a four day school week many years ago when I was younger before I was a superintendent. Realistically, everybody thinks you're going to save 20% of your budget. You are not. What you're really going to save is about 1 to 3% if you really push and really economize and don't provide any services on Fridays, you could save maybe 4 and a half, 5%. We'd be one of the largest districts in the state to do that. Okay. But every percent on our budget, just to be clear, it's very simple math. It's $250,000. Every percent saved or spent in our budget is a quarter million dollars right now. So if you could save 3%, that'd be $750,000. Areas you can, on the research that shows there where you don't save and actually you actually crush and hurt is your food service program. So you have to be prepared for that because you lose one day of revenue. Okay, a week on that. And your general fund has to prepare to pick up that difference. Which, again, we're one of the few school districts in the state that runs their own food service program where we don't transfer funds into our food service because our food service director right here does such a wonderful job of making sure she runs a great ship for that. So you have that. The issue then is you have trying to recruit employees. What research shows is that if I'm working for 18 bucks an hour, five days a week, 35 hours, I'm on a fixed budget usually on that hourly wage. I can't take a 20% pay cut on that. So A, you make up a little bit on hours. Then you actually increase on their wages. So they're made whole. So you still have employees and you know what it's like to try to recruit employees right now when we're getting one to three teaching applicants for positions now, if we're lucky. Areas you may save, if it's written in the contract correctly, and that's why going for bid, we're going to put a clause when we go out for quotes, I'm sorry, for bus services. What if we go to a four day school week? What would our savings off that contract be right away? So we know that number. And then you're looking at moving your staff development days to Fridays, no subs. Limit that. That's how you're going to try to work your way to 1% slowly. Anything above 1% is is a attribute that you're lucky to have. Biggest benefit I see for us for high school is the number of activities we have on the weekend, the distance we travel. They'll actually see a decreased loss of school time. Issues on the other side is how do you communicate and provide childcare for families that work five days a week? With young children. School age children under the under age of eight. Easy answer, everybody says, well, there's a bunch of high school kids that can babysit. Well, that might always might not work out. But those are the obstacles you have. And it takes you about a year to do due diligence to research and survey your staff and everything else. That's probably, again, more information than you wanted.
No, that's great. I mean, that's good information. If it, I mean, so you say a year, if it was something that was going to save money, it
Would help in future budgets.
Or it could be done faster or not?
Well, you would have a portion of and I'm a pheasant hunter and farm back east and looking forward to this weekend. It's like taking that new personnel that's just starting and doesn't know enough information. They go through a box of shells and haven't anything. You might get lucky occasionally. You really need to be targeting what you're going to do. I would say that if we were to start tomorrow, it would be, boy. I'm just thinking about the survey stuff we'd have to do and things like that and collect data. We could probably get an answer by April, but boy, that that's, we're going to have people emailing me and sending me notices that I'm going to transfer my kids to Rapid or Spearfish to Lead Deadwood or wherever else, because I need to have five days a week. All those things are going to happen too. I mean, do I think it's a viable, possible option? I think it's something we we should research. And I think one of the biggest benefits, nobody realizes on this, I think it's going to would help us with the retention of staff and recruitment of staff. That would be the two biggest viable options in a teacher shortage and a difficulty to stay competitive on salary and benefits with very little increases from the state. Or no increases from the state, how do we attract people to work for us? You make the environment a little bit different and better. So yeah, I put a lot of thought in this. I have sort of a roadmap, but my roadmap is 12 month roadmap decision. If board pulled the trigger on a decision next December for the following school year. So you have to decide by December if you want to go down. I mean, but I didn't put this on here because it's a long term solution, yet that's more of a December, January discussion.
So on the four day work week, I was asked a question over the weekend. If we just went four day a week on the high school, would that have any impact on the budget?
Yes. We would see a mixed basket of nuts that would be very difficult for us to do the transportation with all our schedules work with our schools. Delays, kids sitting, etc. That would be, that would be a difficult piece. And then our shared staff and our specials, especially in special education, speech therapists, psychologists, all these people that work five days a week serving all these schools, trying to figure out how we're going to serve and get that time in. The rules, it's, it's a, it's a great piece that provides an opportunity for us because of distance to marry up to bordering districts that have four day school weeks. When you look at what we do in a five day school week versus four day school week for the other 2,900 students. You know, we've had a 25% student drop in the rural. We've gone from 102 kids since I've been here down to 76 with that. And that's no different than my hometown area and looking down a five mile swath that we picked up 18 miles out of town. I picked up a busload of kids. Now there's four kids. Demographically changed across the country.
So my response was, I thought we would actually see a budget increase by going just high school, four day. That's my initial thought because of busing concerns and and some other concerns that we might run into that we we would have to choose that we go four day as a collective group and to do a cost savings.
Yeah, you know, we'd probably see the high school student population, staff like that, but we had to, we'd have to really do the research, see how that looks. I think it at wash at best, possible loss, but you'd have to do the numbers on it. And and, you know, we received 60 kids that go to our high school out of the Rapid City School District. 60 kids. We have 300 plus students that open enroll into our district. Would you pull up the online link again? Yep, that one. Go all the way to the bottom. And I'll leave this on here. I'm a data geek, so I put the enrollment history up here since 2010. I track enrollment and data and a lot of grade level, everything else with this. What grew us out of that 2012, 13, 10% budget cut that was necessary because of the housing crash and everything that happened in the state of South Dakota at that time.
Can I interrupt you for a moment? I just want to say thank you for all you folks who came. This was encouraging hearing what's going on. I did grow up in a country school. We know are your hearts and so forth. But you guys did come up with a solution for country schools, just have more kids or hire people with lots of big families. That would help out. But I just say I didn't, I didn't Oh, yeah. But yeah, I just appreciate your hearts and so forth and encourage you you to hire people out there when you need help and have kids.
So here's our enrollment trend. So you look at 2012, 13, when you're moving forward at this, we had 10% cut from the state statewide. We grew our way right out of that. The best way you can afford to do everything you're doing is growth in the state of South Dakota because the way the funding system works, finding students per pupil. Only way you make margins is to support other things. And if you looked at our previous slides, you look at Sturgis Elementary and Piedmont Valley being our our big moneymakers in Sturgis Williams in order to support what we do elsewhere. So we've put more kids in classrooms there across the rest of the district in order for us to run the rest of our district. Our high school loses like $38,000. Our high school should lose $300,000 a year because we don't offer automotive. We don't offer nursing and career pathways. We don't offer a full time culinary arts. We don't offer comprehensive building trades program. We don't offer business and computers at a full time rate. What I just mentioned there was everything our neighbor in Spearfish is able to offer because their efficiencies. And they have four to 500 students less than us. What that tells us is that my concern on a K 12 solution, I can't add those things anyway right now. But are we truly looking at the K 12 educational solution of what we're doing for all students, whether they go from Whitewood to the middle school, Whitewood to a different school, rural to our high school to somewhere else? I still have to serve 829 kids for their future out of our high school. And we are honestly falling behind in our high school. We can offer, I can't touch those things right now. I have to solve a budget issue of 1.25 million and not do what I love to do is grow programs for opportunities for kids and have these conversations. But if you look at 2022, we had 3,081 students. we had 3,081 students. We're at 2948. Simple math, about 140, 133 kids times $7,700 a kid. Our break even is $7,900 a kid on expenditures right now. For last year.
And at 3,100 students, we can operate the way that we do and add programs at 3,100 students. But as we see this trend of declining enrollment in our district and many districts across the state, with a population, a birth rate that's higher than the national average, that declining enrollment is really what's, what's catching us right now and having to make hard choices in the district.
This isn't due to some strange fiscal managed management by our previous board members, because Joe's over in the corner. That's why I said that, Joe. He did a good job. Okay. Joe Urbanix over there, he's board chair. That's not what's driving this issue. The issue is enrollment. And as we continue to try to grab enrollment, you know, you look at 28 more kids from homeschool connections. All these things, these open enrollment kids. You know, we could be down 150 kids if we weren't winners in those categories. And have an even bigger issue. So we are working to solve the problem with all these ideas. It's just what are the decisions the board's going to have to make for that? And I'll, I'm going to bring this up because it'll be coming up at the next meeting. Every time we don't do something, this number here gets larger and a bigger impact. We've already cut two bus routes. We've absorbed a teacher at Sturgis Williams, teacher at Stage Barn, teacher at Piedmont Valley, part-time culinary arts, business position at the high school. We've been doing natural attrition in the background to try to save money to work our way out of this. This isn't a situation where we've just let it blow up to us. The shortfall of enrollment this year was a big surprise to everybody across the state. Spearfish is down 92 kids. They weren't expecting that. Rapid City is down 292. You know, so this isn't a, a mead school district issue. This is a statewide issue that's taking place. And I do not expect any relief from the state on supporting what we're doing with their current finances. They're actually telling us, how do we spend less? Talk to your legislators, because I have legislators in the areas who tell us, we need to spend less. We need to do less. Offer less. Well, that's number of kids in a classroom then that we increase and school closures and everything else too. All right, I'm done diatribing. Sorry. Other, other questions?
I know you're not, I'm just curious. I mean, the kids didn't disappear. Do you have any idea where Rapid-
We're all looking into that right now. Our counting day was the last Friday of September. We're two weeks after that. So as we look into where they go, we know homeschooling is the number one issue and then we have move outs is number two.
Not looking at school, honestly. But I was wondering, do you, would that be a way to give revenue, like the percentage?
So that's all based on the enrollment strategy. If a student's full time, where it's a, let's just use the ballpark, they're about $7,500. Okay, the question is how much money do we receive from a student, whether homeschooled or not? It's the same amount of money we receive as a student that's enrolled in a regular building. $7,500 if they're enrolled full time. If they're part-time, we get that prorated. So if they're 40% time, 50% time, whatever it is, we have that prorated for that cost. Currently, the right homeschool connections is a very efficient program, ran very well. No argument about that. When I brought that, Britt jumped up on it and really did a good job and our teacher has too. Moving that forward, we have to think, it won't solve all of our problems. It just helps with our problems. I think in five years, if we do it right and make good connections, because I am actually pro, I'm the only superintendent I know in my group that'll say this. I'm pro school choice. I'm just anti voucher. I think we have to meet people where they're at and serve families where they're at and what they need. Not think that we're the be-all in the school building. We have a lot of kids that come into the high school that are part-time for music, chemistry, might be advanced math, all those different things in the middle school and stuff like that. And they don't touch homeschool connections, maybe. They just come in part-time. And they're not taking curriculum online, so.
Mr. Wormstead?
Yep.
I've got a couple of questions on that, and that is, when does our current contract for that homeschool connections end? We funded that for two years. And how soon could we increase that or fund it to go into the K-12, which is what does seem to be the next step?
So, it's not a contract. It's a board choice. I've asked the board to trust and try to pilot this for two years. We're in second year. We'll be collecting data, presenting that probably in December. I talked about solutions in January. Hopefully February, have a decision and a direction. Our easiest expansion of that for a district is actually for us to continue with our K-8 expansion of that. High school gets a little more complicated. There's probably solutions there, but we have to be very thoughtful that we don't increase our expenses to take care of that versus, there's a lot of growth area that we're seeing. I think in the elementary and middle school that if we could do something more in the valley where we touch base there, Piedmont, Stage Barn. And realize, we don't take open enrolled students unless they've been an open enrolled to us for two years. We're, this is targeting serving our students, because as soon as we open it up to kids from out of district, we have to become a virtual online school and meet all those requirements and everything else. That means we'd have to worry about the kid from Sisseton who chose to not go to school and sign up for our virtual online school and say, are we taking the revenue? There are school districts that are doing that. I won't name them. To just boost their enrollment and not looking at serving kids. So we have to be very thoughtful about that. I think it's K-8 for next year expansion, probably add a teachers. My gut right now, I don't have the data to support that entirely. And try to drive our enrollment to about 100 students served and about a 50 plus ADM for that.
Most of the online ones for the high schools that have been done in the state or piloted across the state have not been very successful. And they've gone backwards, except there might Harrisburg potentially, but that'd be a long-term thoughtful solution to that problem, I think, for nine through 12.
Your active participation in online schooling with students severely starts to drop after elementary school. Middle school drops. High school, a ton. We were all teenagers at one time. I mentioned unsupervised schoolwork and supposed to get it done on time sometimes. Some of you had done great. I would not have done well on that.
And, and, and could the current staff that's, that's handling this program handle a K through 12?
Uh, no, we, we need to add staff. First of all, I want to get away from the K-12 because the nine, 12 piece is very, has a lot of pitfalls. We gotta be careful, but we'd have to add, we need to add staff to, to grow our K-8 program. Talking to Mr. Porterfield, he thinks the number's about 60 students served, which would be about 33 ADM at the rate we're going, I think, correct? A teacher to manage that, and that might still be too much. Depends on the services we're trying to provide. Another thing is if it's only in Whitewood, if we have point contacts we need to make with parents, things like that, we're probably going to need somebody down in the valley. We have somebody that probably needs to travel up to CMCS to meet families that want to get some one-on-one service. So we have to really think about how we expand that thoughtfully. And I would stay away from the nine, 12 yet until we master the K-8. So I'd say our expansion is K-8 to serve more kids in more areas of our large district.
So nine through 12, you need certificated teachers in every content area, right? So you're looking at at least four different teachers to teach a full program.
And then if you had electives and that, you need like Spanish or anything else, you're going to need to have a teacher of record for all those. The, the easiest-
Does Mr. Porterfield have that?
He has a couple of them. Not all of them for high school. So when you look at that, so how do you offer a comprehensive online school? You're going to need to have all that certification. Everybody says it's very easy. Just have a teacher X who teaches math, do this for one period a day. Well, that sounds great until that person has to meet with somebody down in Somerset and they have four other classes they're teaching. So the logistics become a real problem with that. Because our thing is if parents want to come in and meet with our teacher, we, we try to arrange that if we can, and then they're onsite. So there's some things we have to tighten up and, and look at, and we have to look at kids that are leaving a middle school primarily that may not be successful. Tell them maybe we don't want to move them into homeschool connection and figure out how we, we weed that out a little bit better. So kids are successful, because that's the end goal. Our end goal is not really, our primary goal is not a revenue generator, still to meet kids where they need the help and families. And then generate revenue to support our other programs. It's two-step on that, so.
Staying with the enrollment questions and not homeschool at Whitewood, but just Whitewood in general, like just going back to the recruitment question for the district is, are, like, are there any specific ideas for more to get more students to Whitewood?
Well, we currently, we started, oh, second year, I think my second year here, three years ago, Britt, is that right? Reverse busing. Three years ago, we started reverse busing and we have students that actually choose to get on a bus here in Sturgis and go over to Whitewood. I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head on that one. Seven kids this year that are enrolled over there that would be Sturgis students that are currently going over there.
Could we increase that reverse bus route to take some stress off of Sturgis or Sturgis Elementary and and utilize Whitewood to full, to more of its fullest capabilities?
Two things you have to consider that. We can't force parents to get on the bus, put their kids on a bus and drive over to Whitewood. It's no different than what people are telling us here about fifth grade driving this way. It's a choice to do that. Okay? Second thing is for, if you'd grab enough students and pull them out, we'll be reducing a teacher over here. So there's going to be, all these decisions aren't in isolation to themselves per building. It is the entire district budget across how FTEs are working across that and how we, how we balance every item. So I, if more want to get on the bus, we have not told people, no.
Have you encouraged it?
We tell people it's available. We are trying not to pit schools against schools. We have great teachers at every school building in our district. We have different demographics, as you heard tonight in every district. At the same time, I hear the Whitewood graphic, demographic that we also don't serve our high need populated students that need three staff to four kids in a room. That high behavior, autism, other functions that are not appropriate in a classroom that we pull out. We serve those at Sturgis Elementary and Piedmont Valley. We do that to ensure that we have the capacity to do that. And we don't have a special situation where we have that in a Whitewood, because we can't serve them there. It'd be worse duplication of that service. Financially, so. We bring those students over to the two large elementaries. We have the capacity to serve that. So every, every building is unique and it's, and we have great, great staff at Whitewood, the rural and everywhere. That's not about how great our staff is. Every building has different percentages in special education students that we serve from EL, LD, all the different areas. Early language learners. So every building is unique to the needs they serve, and that does affect their test scores. We have, as Mrs. Peterson told me earlier, says, you know, our graduation rate at the high school, people don't realize this, we have a student that is going to be, stay with us till 21 due to a disability they have for our job skills program. The state counts them as a non-completor in four years. They don't graduate. They become a completer at age 21 when they age out with their job skills. So it's one of those unique things that we play by certain rules in order to fill things, so, yeah. Other questions?
I, I think you, you need to be commended on your vision of this. You and I started the same July. You and I went to Sioux Falls together, sat down, talked about our visions of the district. But you strategically put these things in play, and I've seen them play out over four years of, you saw that if we could get the enrollment up at Whitewood, that would take pressure off of Sturgis Elementary, but also fulfill the numbers that it needs to be successful. You, you brought up the homeschool connections to build that connection between students that are leaving the district, but still need resources. You're, you're a big advocate for student learning, no matter where it takes place. And that's important because a lot of schools are pushing these homeschool kids away while you're saying, we want to support you in any way that's possible. And they need to be, they need to be educated because at some point we will all need healthcare and, and services, et cetera. So you see the value in educating students that are, that are our students in the district, but also our students in the district that are choosing other options. So you've, you've had a vision for this for, since day one, I think. And you and I've discussed a lot of this, so I really thank you for like what you've saw in this. Mr. Birded, I, I can't thank you enough. You, you're about as frugal as they come. And, and really annoying most days if we want to progress in the budget on something. You were very frugal and threw a lot of administration change in the district. I've seen over the 10-year span before Mr. Wormstead got here, you protected the district to, to make it to this point right now where we weren't pulling out of capital outlay at this point to, to fund our general fund. And, and that's a lot of perseverance on your portion, and I appreciate that. Back to my questions and beating up on Mr. Wormstead.
And, and a few lectures by Mr. Birded on making sure that we try not to do that until we absolutely have to. And we're both in agreement. Now we need to raise taxes and pull that money over.
So at, as I've been here four years, I've seen our property and liability insurance go up over $250,000. Can you explain what's causing that? And, and then more importantly, what, where does that money come from? What fund?
Would you want this one or you want me to keep on talking? It's your turn. No, it's your turn.
Well, you're doing a wonderful job. Values. When we, I'll give you an example. We constructed Stage Barn Middle School at about $167 a square foot. All right? And so that building was assured at that replacement cost of around 16.7 million. Now those building cost valuations being year'd by, by insurance adjusters is over $400 a square foot. So the last four or five years, through premium increases, they've been bringing building values up to more replacement costs versus actual costs when they were constructed. If you look at our high school, built in 77, whatever that age is, that has to be insured now. It, it's replacement value cost of around $400 a square foot, not 50 when it was built. That's probably the one biggest driver to increase in our property premiums is the replacement cost of new construction. Liability is just based on claims. If you have a district that has settlements or, or suits and has to be settled and your, your claims go up, they charge more money to get their losses back. We have had very few property claims, a couple of water leaks. Hail's our biggest one down in Piedmont, in Somerset area. Beyond that, our claims are good, but we can, can still see those premiums go up based on cost to rebuild, new construction costs is where they're getting us at, so.
So my first year property liability was $347,000 for the district. This last year, it's $635,000.
Before we lose any more kids, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, kids.
Everybody who's got kids here, they have been so respectful to sit through this meeting, because half the board members, they're, they're probably ready to take a nap. You kids have been so respectful and we, we appreciate that. Thank you very much. I will try and bring some candy for you for the next meeting if you show up at May 27.
Yeah. Our, our board chair visits all the schools and delivers candy in a Scooper Sam outfit. Yes, he runs around a-
I don't think you're supposed to tell that secret.
I think they all know it is. Easy has no mask.
They still think I'm the real Scooper Sam, though.
Other questions? I know we got business tonight too. Here's a question that I have for the board. What other information do you want? So this is, this document we're using here is a live document as, as we make changes or we add items. Thank you. We will update this. Example of what I'm going to put up here now, because I know enrollment trends probably, I've seen some people perk up. I will add up the building enrollment trends on that, so you can see the charts on every single school building we have, you know, all the data. I have the slideshow we used and did the comparative analysis for budget and enrollments in different places for this. We're trying to be very data-driven on what we're looking at for cost measures control. And the problem is with this, it takes the emotion out, and it's a problem, takes the emotion out with people loving and passion for their schools. I'm a small school person with 11 kids and a graduating class and 41 in high school. My first job, I had 35 kids in school. My junior, senior classes combined with nine kids. My seventh grade classes combined, I had six kids. I get it. As in Crestbar. I understand that. I went to Timberlake as a principal and did a bunch of different things, all that stuff. I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out, put the district in the best spot it can be for a K-12 education without having to gut our opportunities for our kids when your little kids are in high school. The best opportunities they have to find their path in their future. At the same time, run everything else as efficient as possible. So we can provide those resources. That's the end goal to this. So.
I want to thank everybody that came tonight because everybody was super respectful. I really appreciate that because we've been at meetings that it was not displeasing. So I appreciate it. And I know I've talked to multiple people, but the, the reason the rural and Whitewood are here, and I, and I even have some questions that I didn't get asked or I didn't ask last week. It seems on paper, it seems like the rural, I mean, we have five schools and we're trying to close, or we have, yeah, five schools. We're trying to close two. It's a huge percentage. Whitewood, you know, It's a huge percentage. Whitewood, you know, in this proposal, we're pulling the, pulling the principal, moving a grade. It seems pretty big. Sturgis and Piedmont, I know there is some cuts there, but we don't all see them, I guess is where, and I know that's where some of the people are here because it feels like a couple of areas are getting hit way harder than other areas. I'm just wondering, can you explain maybe a little more on where those cuts are to try and because it, it just, it does seem like two areas are getting hit way harder than the rest.
The, the most obvious because of the way they're structured this. So when we were doing natural attrition and not rehiring positions at Sturgis Williams and Stage Barn and Piedmont Valley. They're big enough districts when you still offer the same programs, you just shift and you have more kids in classroom when it gets that small. So we, we put, and you look at the enrollments and the average per class size on that presentation I had last month, pull it up, look at it and you look at the number of kids there. We do that because it's actually very easy that we have, we have someone retire, we absorb that. If we can, we move a teacher, we take care of those things because they're very easy to see. It's very easy for the board. Doesn't create a lot of controversy. As we continue to that, we're still going to be doing that. I'm still, as we look at these seven retirees and I can move a teacher because we have a retirement in X grade level and I can take a teacher and move over there or not replace it. It's actually the best thing for the budget. It helps set up for future years. So we're doing that. Doing it at the high school. We didn't hire a full-time business teacher, part-time culinary arts. Those things are happening. When we cut two bus routes, I have a group of parents that have their kids that are north of Rapid that are on the bus for 90 minutes a day, elementary kids. I'm sorry, 90 minutes each way. So they spend three hours a day on the bus because the parents work in Rapid and they cannot transport them. You said on transportation, you know that and, and how we're doing that. So we squeezed a lot of other areas and I know that after this, the next thing I do is I'm going to have to increase class sizes probably significantly through first through eighth grade and start cutting programs and activities to a degree that could, if it doesn't correct, enrollment doesn't correct, that will have a significant impact and have people standing in here from different directions. Having their impassioned pleas also. So constantly looking at options.
And, and when you talk that somebody leaves, that position isn't replaced, which in effect has increased class sizes already.
That has.
And, and that's something we've done through policy is over the last three years, increased class sizes in our bigger buildings, year after year after year. And that was a big concern for policy committee when we initiated that first policy. And then it's came back to us and asked to increase that.
So our opener, we put an open enrollment policy in because we need to control some of our class sizes when we're growing in uphill tick when I first got here. So we put limits primarily for those limits. We were affecting Sturgis Elementary, Piedmont, the middle schools, two large middle schools. What we did last year is I, and not much fanfare from staff in those buildings for sure. We, I asked the board and they approved for a one-year waiver on those limits by one student per classroom. Well, that ended up driving some of our enrollment stuff that we would have had five more classrooms that would have been blocked from open enrollment that were able to take kids. And on the average, that's four kids per grade level per building. Or five. So by doing that, I figured we raised about another $85,000 in revenue. But I put more kids in a teacher's classroom in those larger buildings is what we did. To try to offset these issues. So it's, it's multi-phase across this that we're working on to try to drive students, figure out we do that. We're going to reevaluate that again. We're going to keep that in place or raise it by a half student per section because we do an average there. So we can grab three or four more kids, but at some point that becomes too much for those teachers in the larger buildings when they start seeing 25 to 27 kids in their classroom trying to teach. And we've had 28 kids down in Stage Barn in a classroom, 26, 27, the middle school here. One of those large class sizes there in the high school that came through. Trying to avoid that. Thanks Lee for letting me. There I try again.
I have two comments and a question, I guess. First comment, I want to echo what has been said up here already. Just I want to thank everybody for not coming up and speaking to us as if minds are made up or any assumptions, I guess, of what anybody is thinking up here. That's, I, I really appreciate that. I also want to echo what Wayne said. I think, I want to acknowledge what everybody said about Whitewood students and the Whitewood teachers and the rural students and the rural students. I just also want to take a second to say that we have some really wonderful teachers across the district in Sturgis and Piedmont as well and students as well. And we can't forget about that. That do really wonderful things and go on to do really wonderful things as well as the rural students and as well as the Whitewood students because we are all the students of one district. And we're all doing the best we can. So those are my two comments. And then my question is, I assume there's other items. I know that these are the best ones in your opinion that you've put in front of us. Are we able at some point to see any of the other ones?
So there's two processes that I've done this in years of experience and there's the smorgasbord list where I put up $2 million until the board, they need a 1.25. That gets everybody really excited, but also what it really does to your staff. Because everybody can sort of linked what the staff is and who's Lee Senior and who's in that sort of area and everything else. You actually encourage people very early to start looking for jobs and realistically you may not get those people laid off. I, I'll give you the simplest explanation. So we have decisions we have to make in December, right before December 1st by law. Okay. That's real school closure. And I recommend by that time for alignment and knowing what we're doing, you'd make a decision in fifth grade either November or the December board meeting. Everything, so if you scroll up and stop at the 2.0 teacher area. Oh, right there. My solution is right now, I will push living daylights out of trying to find supplies and eliminate some activity positions represented everything else, which will be $3,000, $2,000 at a pop. But realistically where that is, that 2.0 number gets a lot higher. If we don't make the savings in areas, that's going to grow to four to six in that range to make that happen. And that's going to affect, still may affect Whitewood, may still affect rural, but will affect even more schools and more likely will affect the larger schools in our district and increase class sizes. Or elimination programs at the high school. That's reality. My question is if you want that listed out there, then I can do that. But if the board's not serious and I recommend against this because I'm going to cause already a big enough stir when I put the counselor up. Targeted that, the tag position. You're asking me to put up about five or six more people essentially that we're going to be able to identify? Not that their names are up, but those areas. And say, are you willing to do that versus this? And if the board chooses not to do the closures in, in fifth grade, then there will be a longer list that I'll bring up and the ramifications of that. Those ramifications are worse for offerings across the district, K-12. As hard as that is to say and, and value what's happening in Whitewood and the rural, I can still offer educational opportunities at those grade levels and serve those families if they choose. But as soon as I cut programs from the high school, none of our kids get opportunities to serve those programs as those elementary kids go through or current high school kids. That's, that's the reality of that when that comes through because we will be that far in. And next year, if we have a major drop in students, I'll be sitting here recommending a bunch of decisions that I don't like. And a lot of stuff the lady from Whitewood talked about with education for grade five, she's absolutely right. Best setting is a K-2 building, a three, four, five intermediate and a six, seven, eight middle school. I'll tell you that every day of the week. I just got to have facilities and staffing to run of us, to do that financially. Most of the stuff everybody said here, I agree with. I just trying to figure out how to do everything K-12 wise, district wide, within the resources we have. Did I answer everything or too much? All right.
Mr. Burditt, how long can the district sustain this if we don't make a decision and move forward? Or a partial decision? What, what, what implications does that have for our district?
We will go through roughly between two and two and a half million dollars of reserves. All right. And so Wayne asked me that question a while ago. So we ran out oh, 30, 36 months worth of cash flow analysis based on some assumptions. One, that we, we don't cut any expenditures. Our, our enrollment doesn't grow and the state doesn't come up with very many increases to the formula. All right. Which our two enrollments, one money comes from for enrollment or comes from the increase in state aid formula through legislature. If we don't get any of those, we run a flat enrollment. We're looking at October 2028, where we have to slowly start to then use other funds of money to push our payroll through. Mrs. McGilvery and I and the colleagues in the business office sat in, down the road here about three days ago or last week and, and put those numbers together based on some assumptions, what our payroll might be at that point through years from now. What that monthly spend is. Again, we, we don't get any money till after the 20th of every month. Property taxes, when they come, come after typically between the 15th and the 20th. State aid comes the last day of the month. Those are our two largest source of income. Okay. So we got to run our, our support staff payroll and our first certified payroll on typically those days. And we have to have at least two, two and a half million dollars, knowing that we're going to lose roughly. Oh, we we, we deficit spend from July till October, anywhere between a million and 570,000 every month until we get property tax payment. Then we go into a surplus and then we go into that repetitive cycle of deficit spending till taxes come back in May, we go to surplus and then we go back into deficit spending. That cycle repeats itself every year. Only thing changes again is where your cash balance is when you start those periods of deficit spending. That's what we have to monitor.
So the issue with that, that's flat enrollment. When you come out of that, the budget corrections would be much more massive on that because you haven't made any corrections for three years. And you're going to be possibly cash flow borrowing, which I don't know how you do that in South Dakota. I was at a district that was $800,000 in red and we had a cash flow borrow $2.1 million and fix that. This is an easier problem. If we address it early, that board chose not to address that problem and went completely the other way. And I got to be the new guy that followed the guy that on that one. That was not, that was difficult for three years. We are at the verge here that we have to say, okay, do we want to follow the path of putting everything off and have a bigger problem in the future? Now, one thing I do know this, since I've been here, since I've been hired, I have had 16 board members in four years. As I talk about this, I'm going to have new board members. Probably the next three years, they're going to have to make those decisions and every decision delay puts a pressure on them across the board. So my advice is no decision is a bad decision. A decision is fine, but if we you need to get to 1.25 million. That's what I'm going to say. You have to get to 1.25 million. If you're going to have hope of making corrections in the future, if enrollment grows, hallelujah. We can sustain everything as is at that moment. And maybe bring something back. But if it doesn't, you set up for a much larger issue in the future.
Next question. I don't know if I want to ask you this Brett, but last one was lengthy. South Dakota is a balanced budget state. How long can we consistently deficit spend before it becomes a question from auditor, state level?
Well, we had this question at our exit interview with our auditors this year. So we've been in two years of deficit spending. Two years ago was, was, was designed to, so we could get under our 25% cash balance. Last year was about 260,000. So our auditor is going to look at that and go, is there anything we need to be aware of coming up that might be a concern? And that is one of the things we brought up is, is our enrollment decline has put us into a longer period of deficit spending than we had anticipated. And that's probably our biggest concern coming up. So they like to see a corrective action plan within three years. Once you start to show material deficit spending, and material meaning things are out of your control, you know, $200,000 in, in, in a 25 million dollar budget, it's not real material. This year will be that, probably that real big material sign that says we're, we need to have a plan in place.
So this will be year three. So we at least need to have a plan in place for correction.
This, I would say the, the previous two years were such a small amount of deficit spending, they're probably not going to consider it a, a, an unbalanced budget or a, a problem you should be aware of. It's when you get a, a number we're looking at this year that's going to be 3% of our budget, 4% of our budget. Okay, that's, that's a signal to them that what are you doing to prevent this amount of deficit spending from reoccurring? And what does that plan look like?
Thank you.
So I got a report from my wife who works at the hospital that says South Dakota has the ninth highest rate of suicide in the United States. We're talking about losing a counselor and I just, I guess I want to know, what do we have for a backup plan besides suck it up buttercup?
We actually do with BMS and other agencies, we allow to come into service that and we do referrals out across that and work with social services, of course. I'll tell you, that is the worst idea. The reason that one's on there is primarily because we funded that with COVID funds. And now those funds are gone. Just like we absorbed two of the teaching positions through, from COVID funds at the middle schools as soon as we could. Those two other positions were counselors and that's my least, like we should, we should keep the counselor and add three social workers to our size districts, what we should be doing. Without a doubt. We have a ton of work enough to serve kids in Whitewood, to Sturgis, to the valley, to everywhere else. That we should probably add three social workers. We have one for 3,000 students. So yeah, we have, we have a lot of areas that we could, I could allocate resources really easily towards mental health, survival, things like that. And also then into programs at the high school and bring programs in the elementary if we were able to do that. And that's a key thing. When we come out of this, and we will, budget cycles last about every eight to 12 years and you reset and work through that. We have to decide what we want our district and our buildings to serve and how we want to serve those kids. How do we support our staff? That's where I'm at. Okay. When we get through this, what do we want our district to like, to be look like and provide for our kids and families? And now, as much as closing schools and Whitewood's fifth grade, the absolute worst decision that I've had put on this is probably the counselor right now. I know I have other decisions we can make, increase class sizes, cause stress, lose teachers and everything else. I think that if we were able to do it, we bring the counseling physician back.
Other questions, statements from the board?
Anything else you'd like to see for the 27th? Further information? Don't mistake, because I'll add to that as a short presentation. If that's information you want to see prior to then. I, I can pull next level ideas that I have that would be alternatives, but I'm a lot of people are going to figure out what we're putting up there and it's going to also cause more stress for employees as was just stated.
Mr. Wormstead, I do have a question. So are, are, is this going to be the same list that you propose? Or are you thinking that during this next meeting, there might be hearts and hearts and minds changed? There might be a better plan that comes up? Or is this what we're going to stick with?
No, this is what, this is what I'm proposing to the board. The board has to make decisions of what they want or don't want. I don't get to decide this. My job is to bring forth to you, as you talked about in June and July, a K-12 solution that has what I think is the best impact for the district. And I know that sounds cold, but if you want something else or you want to see something else, you direct me to put something else up in an alternative and I'll do that. If we don't close schools by December 1st, then I will come up with $252,000 in their cuts. If we're not going to approve consolidating the principal position and move fifth grade and in those areas, I will do other things. If you say you're not going to do the counselor. I have the best interest of the district long-term and the students and families we serve and the finance of the district and the taxpayer. I need to get the district to 1.25 million. I mean, one of those options will be gutter strategic plan for our facilities operations and take that money from capital and permanently transfer over. That's a short-term solution that's going to bite the district in the rear and in a short amount of time will perpetually cause problems long. That's a short term solution that's gonna bite the district in the rear and in a short amount of time will perpetually cause problems long term for all your facilities. And the previous board worked really hard to get the facilities in a plan, start moving that direction and we're making ground. I mean, I can do that. I can list a bunch of staff too. I mean, I just need direction from the board. You asked me what my professional opinion is of what we can do for the best solution for our K twelve district. This is it right now. If you want to see something different. And you want to vote on something different or vote this down and ask me to bring other stuff, then that's what we do. But when you get to April fifteenth, when you have to give notices to people and we're sitting at an April board meeting. Cause we can't absorb those positions and I have a long list of people that we're going to non renew or reduction in force. Realize that. This plan right here pretty much I think can avoid laying off people. There'll be job opportunities as whether they are willing to take them and unfortunately, I think the the pair one's gonna be the biggest issue for us from the rural because I. Those jobs are going to be probably in Sturgis or Piedmont Valley area. And that that that's tough. That's just. I'm just telling you what happens if we don't do things. We'll have a list of staff that we will have to reduce in force and have to go through that. And lay people off, more people off. So I don't want you, I don't want anybody to walk away and think, well, if we don't do this, we're gonna be okay. We're gonna affect truly people's livelihoods also at the school district level. That will no longer be employed or have to go somewhere else to find a job because we'll tell them they don't have one. Everybody else, I think I could absorb and find a job for them if we retirement savings and attrition. Send me your requests. I'm still answering emails from the public and everything else, other than what I missed and I had to send an email apology to with that person that I today that I missed it in my email the other day last Friday. Um, but I'll answer your emails. If you send one to me from the public and ask questions about stuff, I'll do my best to get the answers back to you. And the data for that and Brett also, we do that and then board, whatever you'd like to see as alternative proposals or no alternative proposals. We just need direction of what you want now.
Any other comments, discussions? Item nine, action items. Nine A approval of Sturgis Brown High School Purple Star designation. Recognize Sturgis Brown High School as a Purple Star School. The proclamation on military children should be read. Prior to the vote on the approval of Sturgis Brown High School as a Purple Star School. So I will read the proclamation and then I will ask for a motion. So the proclamation, whereas our country owes the daily freedoms to the members of the armed forces, their family members and loved ones. Who share in their service and sacrifice and whereas we celebrate the exceptional service, strength and character of military connected fam- students and families. In the Mead School District forty six one and whereas we acknowledge that the military family face unique challenges. Due to the deployment resignation, service in combat zones and frequent relocation based on duty assignments and. Whereas the Mead forty six, Mead School District forty six one Board of Education. Affirmed their commitment to providing the resources and programs to support military connected students academically, socially and emotionally. And whereas the Mead School District forty six dash one uh, Board of Education calls for the continue. Creation of opportunities for military families and community members to purposefully partner and. Partner with schools in supporting students' achievement aspirations and social emotional development. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mead School District forty six one Board of Education officially supports all military children and families. And be it further resolved that the Mead School District forty six one Board of Education encourages all school staff and community members. To initiate support and participate in appreciation activities designed to recognize. The exceptional role of and unique sacrifices our military connected youth make in our nation's best interest. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution is will be placed in the official minutes.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and Megan seconds, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Nine B, early retirement incentive. Superintendent Mr. Wormstead recommends the board approve the proposed early retirement incentive MOU. Which would offer early retirement incentives such to such district certified teachers. The recommendation is to approve the proposed early retirement incentive MOU, offering early retirement incentives to such district certified teachers. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Terry with the motion.
Second.
Brian with the second, any discussion?
Reminder, if you have a spouse, even though they may not be retiring, you should abstain from this vote.
I'll abstain, I'll take away my second.
Tom's got the second. Any discussion?
So this goes back to what's on here, right, that it.
Yep, this is step one.
Okay, and do we know how many might be likely to accept that offer?
I think we'll hit seven for sure is my, just looking initially at what is available. We had a couple of people contact us on that. Um, the question before the board will be probably in January, what if you get more? And we'll, we'll discuss that as soon as I, I know, I'll know more information December seventeenth and I'll email and communicate with the board. To make sure you're aware what's taking place and how this may, based on the positions, um, are they, do they have to be replaced? If they don't have to replace, we think we can absorb them, that helps with some other decisions later and might bring back the counselor, et cetera, things like that. So that's, that's a little bit later. December seventeenth is the big day that the deadline is to reply that and again, on that MOU, nobody stands in line, nobody waits outside. That's happened years ago. It's all done through electronic communication and timestamp through email. Been very stressful on the teachers when they had them stand outside for, I think it was overnight. To get in line for um, retirement centers. We, we, we're gonna do better this time.
And will that have, I'm just gonna ask you, will that have an effect then on the class sizes?
Uh, possibly, if we can absorb a position, let's say hypothetically, let's say it's at Sturgis Elementary in X grade level and we're. Think we're pretty low, like right now, our kindergarten enrollment averages are down there. Um, if we think our kindergartens. We're not sure how many kindergarteners are incoming to register, we may not rehire that position all the way to July, hoping we don't have to hire it. Okay, so things like that that we'll do will will may delay hiring to hope that. And not hope, but if our enrollment's down, we just won't hire back that position and that'll be a full savings then, things like that. So yeah, we'll, we'll really use that strategically to um, set the table for next year and hopefully future years for our budget concerns. We don't have to um, have such a large list ever again.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Nine C, schedule a special board meeting. Mr. Wormstead is recommending the board approve scheduling a special board meeting. On Monday, October twenty seventh at five thirty P M to receive public comment on the district wide deficit correction recommendation for fiscal year twenty seven. Decision will need to be made regarding the location of the meeting. So as of right now, the only places that we will have internet access is this room and then West Gym. Um, other than that, we, Grunwald does not have good internet access, so we can't just shift over there. And what we're looking at is we believe that that May twenty seventh meeting may have more participants than we have here and we want to make.
October.
Our October. So we are anticipating that there will be more people at the October twenty seventh meeting. Um, so we want to make sure that we can have them sit in there and observe that that whole presentation. Rather than having to shuffle people in here potentially, um, as their topic comes up. Or having another room that they have to sit in and watch it through video recording. Um, it, it may be more conducive conducive if we have it at one location where everybody can sit, we have ample space for them.
This would be similar to when we, you guys had that meeting I came to after I got hired down in um, Somerset. At Stage Barn about the possibility of a high school. Do we feed, receive feedback?
Have we considered um, seeing about use of the community center?
We have not, we just.
They have um.
Oh, she has.
A concert, they already have a concert or something.
Thank you.
I need to announce that I. Really want to be at that meeting, but I have a daughter that's gonna have a parents' night that night and I found out three days ago and. I really need to be at this meeting, but I really need to be at my daughter's parents' night, so um. I was hoping maybe we were gonna talk about the schedule of the dates and I was gonna say.
It's not, so we just have to change some of our information that we sent out and we can change that date if we want to.
Cause if I have any say, I would love to do it a different day because. I need to be there, so if it works for everybody else, it would be awesome if we could move that, but if it doesn't, I totally understand.
What does, just sake of argument, May twenty eighth, the very next day?
October, October.
Dude, get it together here.
That would be October, three days before Halloween. How's October twenty eighth look?
That's what I thought parents' night was. That's why I didn't think it was a conflict, so that would work perfect for me if it worked for everybody else.
I, I need to go around the room and make sure it works on Tuesday night. No Thursdays don't for you, Tuesday does.
I'll make anything work.
Okay, so what we'll do is um, you guys make a motion and put that on October twenty eighth, five thirty. Um, do you want the high school in that motion or do you want us to set the location based on what we can get with tech department? Cause we'd like to have this recorded, of course, and broadcast for that. That looks like it's probably Sturgis Brown High School.
I will make a motion.
One second, tiny.
I think we need to visit with Jade, the um, athletic director.
Oh, that's right.
And make sure that that it's even available.
Should we just pick the date?
I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion here. I make a motion to have the special board meeting on Tuesday, October twenty eighth at five thirty P M. At a location to be determined by the administration. So Brian with the motion, Tim with the second.
We will send that notion and the information out if this passes via um, school email to all of our staff. Uh, all of our parents will get the email. We will blast her out on social media about the change in location, everything, so everybody's aware of that um, for this. Just want to make sure we're upfront about that. We're going to.
There's a volleyball game that night.
Uh, on Tuesday at the high school.
So we, we will. Be on Tuesday, we're gonna find a spot. We'll figure it out. It might down in the valley, could be Piedmont Valley, could be at Stage Barn. You're gonna have to bring some chairs in and bleacher seating.
Volunteer to go out there because there'll be probably a few less people.
No, no, there won't. Still the best suit. Still best Christmas soup kitchen I've had.
Can I clarify at that meeting, it's not a formal official with board action items?
No.
Full on meeting, so it's a community engagement meeting, kind of like we did at Stage.
Can you turn your mic on, Aaron?
It is on, sorry, I'm not leaning into it. Um, I'm catching the cold that Wayne just got, sorry. Um, so do we have any uh, parameters or clarifications that we want to say now about it? That way we can have this audience, the online audience. I know we just had a bunch of people leave, shocker for a long board meeting. Um, parameters or guidelines now that we want to establish about this meeting?
So the.
We have at least a basis to start from.
So the format will have an open forum, but what we're gonna have then is a one item section that's gonna talk about um, community input. And discussion by board on um, proposed budget cuts and underneath that'd be like, let's say it's number four. There'd be four A and each one is gonna get their own thing. So anybody wants to talk about those specific items. On the entire list, the board can hear very specific feedback on every item that's presented. Um, we'll probably get information on counseling, we'll get information for people on tag, we'll get information on rural schools, we'll get information, we'll get a lot of information from a lot of people. But that way the board can hear very specific, today was sort of a shotgun through open forum, very specific feedback on that after listing the proposal. And other items for that. And that'd be an opportunity for the board after all that stuff's done for every item presented or not just presented, but. Get given information on, you can ask then questions to superintendent businessman or anything else about what takes place and be very dissected all the way through. We will have to have maybe one or two action items on that. We have a time sensitive lease from the National Guard that's coming up in a discussion. So there may be a specific action on that, that's gotta be done by November first for the National Guard. They haven't got it back to us yet, so.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Nine D, propose Sturgis Brown High School Rodeo Club water line extension. The Sturgis Brown High School Rodeo Club is requesting approval to the access the Mead forty six one Sturgis Brown High School water line. The proposed water service would extend to the rodeo grounds and provide four to six hydrants for stock water during events, two bathrooms. And a concession stand kitchen. All expenses related to the installation and connection of the water line. Will be the responsibility of the Sturgis Brown High School Rodeo Club. Recommendation is to approve access to the Mead forty six one water line as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Lee with the motion, Brian with the second, discussion.
Are there any concerns with this Brett?
No, um, we've had a contractor draw up the plans. Um, we've been involved with city Sturgis, obviously it's within city Sturgis. We have to do things that are approved um, in terms of their requirements. Um, we'll meet with them in terms of crossing over the sewer line out there behind the high school. I I've contacted the V A. Uh, we buy the water from the V A, uh, and the director of water for the Veterans Affairs. Has has approved this project and once he gets back from vacation, he's gonna give us a memo approving the usage and the extension of the water line. Again, this will be um, on the district's bill, the district will pick up the cost of water used. But the rodeo club is paying for the construction of the water line. We provide water for the Fairboard Association as well as rodeo club as well.
And I would assume we would take all liability for any damage to the line for a future incur. So if there's a break in the line in the future.
Rodeo Club is responsible for the maintenance of the line, just which is stated in the, in the, in the lease agreement. If they put a line, it's irresponsible to maintain the line for the longest its existence is there.
Other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Nine E, amend general fund budget title one uh, one thousand three. Business manager Brett Burdett is recommending the board approve an amendment to the general fund budget. For the Whitewood Elementary and Sturgis Elementary Title One, one thousand three, school improvement grants. These grants provide each school with the resources to support academic improvement. So the recommendation is to amend the general fund budget for the Whitewood Elementary and Sturgis Elementary Title One, one thousand three, school improvement grant. Do I have a motion? Megan with the motion, uh, Tom with the second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Nine F, amend the general fund budget, property and liability insurance. Business manager Brett Burdett is requesting the board approve to amend the general fund budget in the amount of a hundred and forty five thousand. To cover the property and liability insurance premiums, crisis go software and supplies uh, and committee stipends. So the recommendation is to amend the general fund budget in the amount of a hundred and forty five thousand as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Terry with the motion.
Second.
Scotty with the second, any discussion?
The increase in our insurance, is this what we're talking about, questioning whether or not we're gonna cover some of the poorer buildings?
So EMC is, is, is the, is the policy, is, is the underwriter for our majority of our buildings, Tim. Um, the older ones, I believe there's a list of eight that are of an age classification that EMC would not insure. Whether it be construction type, uh, wiring, plumbing, roofing, whatever it might be. We have to go out and get a secondary quote from Chubb uh, industry to ensure those at about three and a half times the, the rate that EMC does. Those are the buildings we talk about self insuring. Um, typically those are our older buildings, old Piedmont Gym. Um, I believe the uh, four rural schools except for Opel are where those were not insurable by EMC. Those are the buildings we look at, what's the replacement cost if something happened? happened? What would we have to have in reserves to do that?
And this amount of money is not for those, or is for those?
Well, it's the total package.
Total premium package.
So we underestimated, I underestimated what the increase in property insurance was gonna be this year. This is just to cover that difference. The board approved-
Everything would be insured.
Everything's insured this year. It's what we would potentially do next year.
It'd be, yes. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. 9G, amend the 25-26 capital outlay budget. Business manager Brett Burditt is requesting the board to approve the approval to amend the 25-26 capital outlay budget by $11,000 to fund Acelis licenses for the homeschool connection program. Do I have a motion? So we'll do Tom with the motion, Megan with the second. Any discussion?
This is an item that was approved. We just missed it, itemizing it in the budget.
All those in favor say aye? Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. 9H, request for proposal for transportation services. The transportation committee recommends pursuing quotes for transportation services. Superintendent and business manager will prepare an RFP for transportation services for the fiscal year 27. In this process, the district will explore the options of assuming responsibility for the rural routes that serve CMCS. Do I have a motion?
No moves.
Brian with the motion?
Second.
Tim with the second?
Realize, this is just directed to start the process. You'll still have to approve the RFP that would go out hopefully in November, and return back sometime in December for turnaround, you know, for approval in January at the latest with this.
This would be for all areas?
Well, we're gonna craft this as a do-all right now of our 21 routes with the option of the district taking over the two routes, and look at the option if we, if the board would choose to close schools, how we'd serve those areas too.
Yeah, but I guess we discussed it in the before, but the cost is going up, so we gotta look at doing it a different way, or and, or-
All of the above.
All the above, yeah, really.
So realistically-
We chatted last week or two weeks ago on the transportation.
Yeah.
What Harlow's has been trying to do for us is, we feel like we can pursue other options.
Yeah.
And with the rural routes being add alternates, that's something that we want to look at, what companies can provide. It's a, I mean, we're a big operation, so running 21 routes plus activities is something that we have to, I mean, we're gonna go see what's out there. Cost-wise, I mean, like, the rates are what they are, and so we're gonna, we're gonna see what we can do about it.
If we, if we stay with Harlow's and they come back with their new quote number for next year, it's gonna go up significantly as they're behind in the pool for pay for wages. And if we go off our quotes, we're gonna see at least two companies that can give us competitive number for that, for our services. We have at least one company that wants to bid on this, so, or quote on this, so.
This is for 27-28?
27-28, yep.
So two years from now, right?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
26-27.
FY '27 is 26-27, yep. So 20, I'm sorry, it's, so it's next fall, so we have to have that decided by January by the board, so if we go with a different provider, they can ramp up their equipment on that and give that commitment to that over time.
Talk about the length of the contract, Wayne.
So the contract length usually has to be five to seven years, because the capitalized cost, if a company comes in and purchases that, their contract is going to be all those buses up front in order to provide that services to an outside provider. To main that capitalization cost for Harlow's, if they were to receive the quote, then they're going to have to upgrade their fleet over time also, so we'll see a capitalized cost on that also. So realize that in order to get return and get that loan from the bank for that number, which is quite a bit, we spend 1.4 million, I just shy of 1.4 million on bus routes alone. That's a big commitment to get that fleet of 21 buses. We used to run 23. We run 2,000 miles a day on our buses right now. That's almost to Guatemala, or it is to Guatemala.
We will, we will have to visit with Mr. Neese in terms of how we craft a contract. There are some legal implications of how long we can enter into contracts. It's about binding future boards of existing contracts. So-
Yep.
They use what's called an evergreen, more like it's three, but plus two, or it's whatever we can stretch out, these guys are gonna be asking for, so they could go out and borrow that money.
And I would just like to add to this about, as far as costs increasing, that we've also had a lot of issues with Harlow's over the last year, two years, four years, that kinda make needing to do an RFP and not just go with Harlow's again really important.
Yep.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. 9I, Black Hills Pest Management Control. The district has received the contract from Black Hills Pest Control to continue providing pest management services as needed to prevent and control pest issues across the district facilities. The agreement is effective July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve if it's for the MEED 461 and not MEED County School.
That one was struck out. I thought they fixed that, but maybe I missed that.
Nope, it still said it, yeah. It still says MEED County School.
Will you approve it without a correction? We'll get the correction made to the contract.
Yep.
So Terry with the motion? Tom with the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Oppose, same sign? That was quick, we must not like pests. 9J, Hopeful Hooves 4-H Club Liability Waiver. Hopeful Hooves 4-H Club has submitted a written request to waive the liability insurance requirement to use Atoll Elementary to hold their bimonthly club meetings. Do I have a motion?
No moved.
So I have Brian with the motion, Megan with the second. Any discussion?
The reason we come back to the board, because it's specifically in board policy that the board has to waive liability. I cannot do that, nor Mr. Wormstead. We do this for the 4-H group here in town when they host events in our schools, and this will be the second year, I believe, Mrs. Urbannick. We will be doing the waiver based on what South Dakota State and the state of South Dakota is not providing these groups anymore. Is that correct, Missy?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. We should've changed one of those ayes to a may, just to throw another may into this meeting. Item 10, policy reviews. It is getting late. 10A, first reading of school board policy AH, conflict of interest, disclosure, and authorization. This is the first reading of school board policy AH, conflict of interest, disclosure, and authorization. Does anyone have comments currently? Or if you don't have comments currently, you can always email the policy committee any suggestions.
This is an update to the conflict of interest policy is what it is, but we're taking the robust one from ASPSD. No one's staying for policy discussions?
You guys drive safe home.
Drive safe. I'm shocked.
10B, first reading of school board policy ACAB prohibition, yeah, prohibition against aiding and abetting sexual abuse. This policy is not currently in place within the district. The policy committee recommends the board adopt the policy for implementation. This is the first reading of school board policy ACAB prohibition against aiding and abetting sexual abuse.
This is 90% common sense put into a policy, and it covers the district that if we had somebody who did something really, really silly, it would be an instant easy for us to address the whole problem.
10C, first reading of school board policy IGBA, special education and related services. This policy is not currently in place within the district. The policy committee and special services director recommends the board adopt the policy for implementation. This is the first reading of school board policy IGBA, special education and related services. 10D, first reading of school board policy DFD, gate receipts and admissions. This policy is not currently in place within the district. The policy committee recommends the board adopt the policy for implementation. This is the first reading of school board policy DFD, gate receipts and admissions.
This policy has come about because this legislature last year required that all schools must take cash at gate admission, has not changed anything we do. We always took cash, but some districts near the Sioux Falls area were only taking credit cards or pre-advanced stuff and wouldn't take cash, so doesn't change anything, but we need to have this policy in place because of state law.
10E, first reading of school board policy ABAD, parents' rights. This policy is not currently in place in the district. The policy committee recommends the board adopt the policy for implementation. This is the first reading of school board policy ABAD, parents' rights. Item 11, discussion items. 11A, National Guard lease agreement. The district has received an updated lease agreement from the National Guard for the board's consideration. Revision within this document are highlighted in yellow.
We received this, and then we sent back our revision numbers of that $15,000. Remember, this is that 25-year lease for that, that's due by November 1st, and they need this completed for them to apply for the fiddle money that's going through Congress right now for the potential addition and access for more space at Sturgis Brown High School, the new addition. So we expect to have this back and be approved at our next meeting in October 28th.
But they're gonna pay, they're gonna pay for additional meeting, so we can do an action item? Are they gonna pay the fees for that?
You already scheduled it without that.
Not the action item.
Not if we had, well, now if we had, if it isn't back in time for the meeting, you will need, and I think we do get it back, let's say, on the 28th to 29th, we'll have to schedule a special meeting on Halloween at the latest. Come dressed in your best outfit.
We could potentially do a Zoom meeting with one-
For one, Adam, yeah, we could do a Zoom meeting, but I really wanted to see you guys dressed up in outfits. I'm coming as a lumberjack, apparently my wife said.
Item 11B, December legislative roundtable. In previous years, the board has hosted a legislative roundtable. The board and superintendent's office will schedule a legislative dinner before the December 8th board meeting and invite our area legislators for a discussion and dinner.
This, we do this every year. The question I'm gonna propose to everybody, do you want to do something different this year from what we did in the past, or you wanna move forth? As I'm just making sure that, you know, last year a couple people just mentioned says, do we need to keep doing this, or should we do it differently? I'm just asking the question.
How useful is it, has it been?
My politically correct answer is how receptive people are to listen to the needs of education, and that will change according to legislators that are put in office.
We, we, there was some listening last year. Yeah, well, it's useful, you get to know them a little bit, so if you email them, they know who they're-
Developing relationships is the best thing about it, but right now we won't have, we have two pro voucher for that, and are worried about what we do in public education and the money we spend on it, to be honest. So-
But it does give us a chance to sit in front of them.
Yes, it does.
One-on-one.
Well, if we didn't do a supper, we'd do something else for sure, okay? Whether it's a mini forum or something that we'd put in here, either or, it just, I'm making sure of that.
Could send out a postcard that said who attended and who didn't. Oh, that'd be like their voting record, right? They don't want that appear.
That's a good one. They all attended last year. One arrived right at the last minute, but yeah, we got everybody here last year, so that's good.
Good, sounds good to me.
11C, Sturgis Brown High School East Campus grazing lease. The Sturgis Brown High School East Campus grazing lease with Denny and Lowing will expire on December 31, 2025. The business manager Brett Burditt will coordinate with Lowing's to discuss the renewal options and seek direction from the board regarding whether to extend the current agreement or open the lease for public bids.
Actually, we have both the grazing and the haying, are both on one-year extensions. We've been doing one-year extensions and trying to work with the high school to see if we can get our FFA program incorporated into active management of the acres out there, and we're not there yet. So that's kind of what we've been doing. The current rental rate is 72, 72.50 per animal unit. We don't drop, we don't drop down. If they wean the calves off, if that's what it is, I can't tell you the price of cows right now. We'll drive that lease higher or not. I can't tell you that. Lowing's have been good stewards like the people in the past. I can't give you a preference there. It's truly, if you think you want to open it up to get a more competitive rate than what you currently have. So same with the haying.
And what did you say? How much did we take in?
Well, it depends. Right now, with the rodeo club acreage being kind of taken off that for now, we're running about 35 pair in there for five and a half months, something like that. So whatever that rate is, it's about $2,400 a month when we got them in there is what we're taking in on grazing rent. So this is a great year. Grass doesn't look like they've even been in there from the road, so some years we gotta scale back. If the conditions are drier, we build that right in the lease. It's not, we don't specify how many you can run. We give them a range based on weather conditions and grass, and grass inventory.
But you said they've been good renters and taking care of things.
Yeah, they've been very diligent.
Fencing, they take care of that?
We go around the fence initially, and then we ask them to help us maintain it because our crew gets busy doing their other activities during the summer. So if Bear Butte Creek comes down, takes a crossing out, we try to work with them to get it done, but they're in there managing those cows. Tim, we asked them to look at the fences as well. BLM does a good job boarding on that side, so really what we've got is what we have with the City of Sturgis, and then what we have to make sure we do along Highway 34.
Do you need a motion?
Nope.
Nope.
Just discussion.
Just discussion, okay.
It will come back as an action item.
So the question, you know, really, are you okay with us continuing with Lowing's, or you want to actually go off for quotes?
I've had a couple inquiries about people looking for grass. That doesn't mean they're gonna bid that amount. Okay, so are there any guarantees? So until we really, we wanted to do this until we could figure out what was the impact of the rodeo grounds, taking that 80 acres away, what the capacity, is it even worthwhile doing it? And the renters say, yeah, it's, it's just a nice size for, you know, not quite full of potload of cows, but it serves a purpose.
Item 12, reports. 12A, administrator reports. Do any administrators want to come up and talk?
There's two left.
Mr. Jade, we were, we were scheduled to have, well, we did have an audit accident interview with Casey Peterson. They don't have the final audit entries done yet. We're still waiting on one of those. They think they'll have their, their stuff ready to present to the board sometime, hopefully in November, at the latest December. It was a good audit.
Thank you. 12B, board reports. Board president has provided the board goals, stoplight report, board training tracker, and the board event tracker. So in everybody's inbox, you should have a training tracker and a board event tracker. So if you attend something, you can go ahead and put your information in there, and it's live, it will update, and then just don't mess with my formulas, please, because if you mess with my formulas, it will not auto calculate. If you would like, you can send me your board training or events that you're going to. If I saw you at an event, or I was at training with you, I've already put that in there. But the stoplight report, just like we had last year, you want to pull that up? You had that up there? So I've already put in what I knew existed. So out of 130 hours, we've attended 35.82 hours. 100% of board members will attend at least 10 hours of training. One board member's completed that, so that's 11%. Community engagement, remember we set that goal for a community engagement. Create a tracker, which is done and in your inbox. Board members have to attend, or have attended at least one event. So I staggered that there. We want to get the six events total, so we can see how many board members have done one event, three events, and then six events, so we can kind of just eyeball that. And then the last one is that each pillar of the strategic plan will have a minimum of two board members to champion the strategic plan. So I will create a survey and get that sent out with a deadline to return it back to me by May or October 27th, whatever, or 28th, we'll go now that we move that meeting. That's October 28th, that was a little joke for nine o'clock at night. But October 28th, I'll have a deadline on that, so that if I haven't received it by October 28th, that's a good time for me to harass you and say, get this in, or I'm just gonna drop you on a pillar. And then we will roll through that with board members attending a meeting every 90 days to get the highlights of those pillars and truly champion those pillars. And that's what I have for board goals, board tracking, et cetera. And that's what I have for board goals, board tracking, et cetera. Questions? 12C Black Hills Special Services Co-op. Terry, take us away.
Yeah. Uh, at our meeting this last time, we had a, a presentation of something that was unexpected, but we were all knew it was there. And that is our media services. In which it was started with Paul Higbee about 30, 35 years ago, he has since retired. It is currently ran by two other individuals, their specialty is more videos and the social media. So what they informed us of, some of the things that they've done in the past year and then some of the things that they do contin, excuse me, continuously. So in the last year, they, they did videos for a day in the life in the DD program, small business roundup, Dakota, Dakota link testimonials and the legacy of Randy Morris, which Randy Morris was the founder of the co-op. On that video, the Randy Morris video, they won a Silver Addy Award, which is presented by the American Advertising Federation, the Black Hills Chapter. They make the videos to help promote the different programs, they use the tools for presentations at conventions and other organizations. They also worked with Billy Mills and his book Wing of an Eagle, which was a children's book given out to the third graders. They've updated signage for different programs such as tie moving to compass. They've rebranded their online learning program. They've also designed the community ed booklet, which is mailed out twice a year. They've updated websites and their videos for the bus driver training, health and human services, youth leadership, GED, DD, Black Hills Special Services and Project Search. They have an ongoing maintenance of the newsletter, the quarterly newsletter, and they produce one to three press releases a month. Most of their videos are shared on Facebook. Morse believes that you need to keep the public informed to grow. To have an idea, the co-op started next year, I believe is their 50th. It started with their $300 from the 12 controlling districts and a couple of grants in Pluma. With the help of the media services, they have built it into a $38 million cooperative with employees and programs across the state, beginning the budget year with their $300 from the 12 controlling districts. So it shows you what media and can do for you, especially today.
Item 12D Superintendent, Mr. Wormstead, do you have any updates for us?
No, actually I went through my updates during other discussion on enrollment and other stuff across the state. So I think you don't want to hear from me any longer and it's 903.
Item 13 upcoming calendar events, October 20th, finance committee meeting at 4:30, October 22nd. Student two hour late start, professional development day, October 27th, special board meeting at 5:30, 28th. November 5th, two hour early release evacuation drill.
I will tell you one thing about that, so for the first time, we're going to do our evacuation drill and, and walk our staff, it's not students, that's why they're early leaves. And we're going to have our, our staff walk through what our reunification is. One of the most difficult things is if you have an emergency, gas leak, God forbid something really serious, pass that. You have to evacuate your students and you need a reunification site to get those parents connected with their kids and it's a major undertaking. We, when I arrived here, we had some stuff on paper, but no plan, now we sort of have a plan that we need to walk through and actually do. And it's all about how we prepare in case we have an emergency district wide. So the entire district shuts down early. We go through some training and then we have every person walk through their role so they know what they do and where it's at. And we have a great team that's leading that, I sort of brought it and they, once again, I bring something and they've taken off with it, our crisis team, our safety team has done a wonderful job with it. Moving forward and we'll learn a lot of items that we should or should not be doing after we walk through it and that's the most important thing from this.
After my experience at debate nationals, trying to find six kids, that's, yeah, pretty important.
Item 15 adjournment, do we have a motion? Megan with the motion, Tom with the second, any discussion about adjournment?
No.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.